Good afternoon to everyone. I'm expecting to read this right now, short notice, but I just had to put it together real quick. I'll do a verbal presentation, see material, if we're going to need numbers or anything. Thank you, sir. Don't be honing in. Okay, real quick, I know this would be budget related, so it'd be in the three-minute comment section. And I'm going to talk about numbers of deputies regarding this position of TNT that we no longer fill, and the fact that I'm looking at school liaison officer, maybe even better yet, just creating that position, just moving it from TNT to the road because we're shorthanded on the road. We've been short of people. We have two in the academy right now. After they get out in December, we'll still be two to three down, so we're looking to hire people, especially certified people or people already have training somewhere else. The generally accepted racial police officer per population United States is around 2.4 per thousand residents, according to FBI Uniform Crime Reporting, UCR, and Bureau of Justice Statistics, BJS. Type of area, we're classified as a rural, small-town slash suburban community. If you look at Leland, we have quite a bit of suburban area, especially southeast part of the county, and yet we have some rural, so I'm going to blend both of those. They are recommending that, and these are classified through moderate density and lower crime rates, as well as fewer calls, larger patrol areas. The two different concepts are basically not less than one person per thousand. Right now, if you include the three admin, which would be the sheriff, the undersheriff, and the road lieutenant, Dwayne Wright, the three of us, still, I made a traffic stop hour and a half ago. We still go out patrol some when we can squeeze in between meetings, and I still walk the schools and saw other deputies. But basically, including us, we were at approximately 0.92 officers per thousand residents. Now, that's based on our current and latest population of 22,871. You take the 2024 statistics, and I'm going to bring that in here in a minute, but you start looking at that. That number of 2,000, or excuse me, 22,871, goes up to about 1.8 million visitors to National Park every summer. And a lot of people in Traverse City in this region all recreate up here. They tend not to go to Fife Lake, Buckley, and Kingsley. They tend to go north up into the dunes and the lakes and so forth. So we have a huge population influx. If you take the admin out, so you take us three who are administrators out of the patrol position, that gives us 0.79 officers per thousand residents, which is very low by national standards. This is a safe county. We want to keep it. Being a safe county, our schools, our resource, our children are precious to us. We want to support school administrations. We want to support students, and we want to support the community. And we can't do that when we're running behind on numbers all time. We're struggling with that. In 2024, LCFO, our office, handled 7,024 calls out of 8,110 total calls that came in, or 87% of the calls was done by LCFO. I believe it was mentioned that we have two troopers in the county. We do not. We have one trooper, and he is a firearm specialist. He travels all over the state of Michigan, puts on firearms training for the state police, so he's here part of the time. It was mentioned we have two conservation officers. We do not. We have one conservation officer, and his primary focus has been on Grand Traverse and Benzie County the past couple of years. He is not around here a lot. He's covering because they're short down there and so forth. On the back page, you will see circle graph. You will see that we cover 87% of all the calls that come in. This is not from our office. This is from dispatch emergency management. This is off their CAD. Kelly Lacrosse put this together for me at the request. So what I'm saying to you is, I really don't want to go backwards in numbers. Yes, we lost our TNT position. We no longer have someone who wants to be in TNT, but we still need personnel. We still need to be able to handle complaints and keep this area safe. So I wanted to make this brief, but I wanted to clear up stuff that I heard, that we had two conservation officers and two troopers here. We do not. In fact, if you look at that last graph, calls by agency, DNR handled out of 8,110, DNR handled 12. State police handled 130. Grand Traverse, Van Tribal handled a big jump of them, 755. And National Park Service, 189. And I would say to you, when people come to National Park, that 1.8 million we get every year, I would say to you that they don't just land in the park and fly back out. They drive through Empire and Glen Arbor and Sutton's Bay, and they go to wineries and cheese festivals, and they go to all our festivals. So we have a lot more people than it shows on paper in our population. So that's pretty much my spiel. I don't want to go backwards on numbers. I want to keep this the safe, enjoyable place that it has always been, and times are changing. We have some bad actors in and around the area, and I can just tell you, law enforcement is more difficult now than ever with law enforcement because of the mental health condition people are in, the drug abuse, just everything that's going on, whether it's drug-induced and alcohol-induced behavior, or whether it's organic behavior. We have a lot of mental health issues, so I just don't want to lose ground, and that's why I wanted to put this quick presentation on.
Thanks, sure.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good afternoon. Kathy Dawkins, Leland Township. I'm here to speak about the Coordinating Leland County Family Coordinating Council. That is an organization in which I have been involved since 1998. I just want to reaffirm that through that council and the agencies that they work with, and I see right here on this opioid settlement funds, it talks about the Friendship Community Center, which I actually used to be a director there too. So I'm very familiar with both entities. Because of those organizations, our county has less problems with children because we are in there working with their families and with the students of this county. So I'm asking that you continue to support and fund them, and thank you very much.
One more comment? All right. Move on to commissioner comments. Comments? All right. Move on to action item number one, which we have Leland County and the Coordinating Council.
Is there, you already approved the agenda?
Yep.
I would have made a commissioner comment that somehow I missed that vote. We're here. Was I? I don't know where my mind was. Just, I wanted the sheriff to be able to, when we're discussing the new officer. So I thought the easiest way to do that would be to add it to the agenda, and then he could be present. But if that ship has come and sailed, maybe we can still invite him up to be present in the conversation.
I will indicate that Sheriff's staff.
If that's okay with other commissioners?
I guess, Emily, I want to clarify. To the second, Fisher. I can't, but we're not adding, we already have the positions, whether we want to keep that. We're not adding staff to the sheriff's. We already have that position. It's been here for 30 years.
The school liaison?
No.
No, no, the officer position.
Yeah, I understand. What you're going to call it, that's something.
Yeah. The position's been here since 1989 or 1990.
Yeah, I understood that. I was specifically talking about the change, which is a.
We're hearing that we're adding.
Move on. We have Sharon here.
Family.
We have a Sharon. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Sharon Rieland. I am the coordinator for the Leland County Family Coordinating Council. And it's also relevant to know that I am the coordinator of Substance-Free Leland, which is the dedicated coalition to address substance use disorder, and that I am a, the prevention specialist assigned to Leland County by Catholic Human Services. All those things kind of play together, so. I did provide you, of course, with a memo when I made my original budget request. And today, I'm sorry, it couldn't be sooner. You have before you a few statistics that I thought you would be interested in. One is, the, one of the major projects of the LCFCC is the laundry project. And for those of you who are not familiar, we offer free laundry services to anybody who would like to come use them twice a month. On Wednesdays, the first and third Wednesday of the month, at the Sutton's Bay Laundromat, who has been a great partner to us. We run that on a fiscal year that runs along with the state fiscal, excuse me, fiscal year. So the stats are hot off the press, and I'm glad to answer any questions about those that you want. Your, the money that you allocate to the LCFCC does not go to the laundry project. It goes to my work in the community. The money that runs the laundry project is entirely community donations. So one thing to know. And then the other thing I did is I just went through and pulled out of my accounting what we've been doing with the opioid settlement funds so far, and we have some more things in the works. But in the year and three-quarters that we've had that money to work with, we have spent, let's see, we've received 96,000 of it, and so far we have spent And I can, some of these are not, these are the descriptors I get back from our sub-fiduciary. So I could probably make them more descriptive for you, but I will work on that. Anyway, I know you've got a lot going on today, so rather than me rambling on, I would love to answer any questions that you have for me.
Awesome. Sharon, the question about the history of the Coordinating Council and the role of the county's Coordinating Council, and who's part of it has come up at this table. Could you give us an overview of that? I'm familiar with it because I've been with you for a long time, but.
Yes. So back in the seventies, the state thought that there was a better way to get people to work together. And they instituted, and it's not actually in state statute, it was more DHHS policy, but they caused to be instituted in every county in the state, some sort of a human services coordinating body. And at that time, the primary focus was helping children, young, you know, families with young children. And the carrot to get everybody to the table to do that was that there were certain block grants that used to be, the grants used to be directly from the state to individual social service agencies. And what they said is, oh, no, no, we're going to give those to the coordinating council. And if you would like a piece of that pie, you need to be at the table having discussions with everybody else in the community so that, I know the dreaded buzzword silos, but let's get out of the silos and start working together. The coordinating, or the human services coordinating bodies have morphed over the 50 years. Golly, I hate to say it's 50 years, but it is. That carrot of that block funding from the state is no longer there. We, we don't have that at all anymore. There was also money that we used to have access to through DHHS and for family, direct family support to try to either reunify families faster or prevent families from having their kids go into foster care. And we used to be able to allocate those funds directly to families, and those are gone too. So we're, we're a true collaboration. And one of the values to that is that we're not out there to compete with anybody who's at our table. We're there to welcome everybody to our table to work together. Broad range of people, whether it's a county commissioner, child and family services, community mental health, the sheriff's department, the school systems. Leland Senior Services is actually working with me to explore whether a particular senior citizen-based work group that's been operating independently might want to fold into the LCFCC. The LCFCC is from whence parenting communities originally sprung. That was originally a project back when we had a $250,000 budget, Kathy?
We actually hit 465 one year.
Did we really? Okay. And I think nowadays, it's an interesting balance, right? Because everybody wants to be at a table that is doing something. And everybody is also feeling like they're at capacity and adding another doing something. So when I'm coordinating the council, I'm trying to find ways to get people to talk around things that they're all already doing and understand better what everybody is doing and what the, what the conditions obtaining in the community are. And there, there is a lot of value. There's people that, that they meet at our table, and now they know who to call in a different agency that they didn't know before. They better understand what their common clients face when they go to different agencies. I also, on occasion, meet directly with people in the community who need some navigation to, to just find out what's going on with them and using my knowledge of the systems and the people within the system to help try to steer them through to where they need to be without it just being them cold-calling in a state of panic. Did I miss anything?
I would like to say that a lot of the funding that is out there is extremely specific. And it's not like just anybody can pick it up and use it. The parameters, the specifics, the the avenues that can be used to use the funding. Sharon and her group know how to thread those needles. So when I was on the sub-council, she would come and present programs from different entities. But we knew when she presented it, they would fit all of the conditions and parameters that were necessary for the funds to, for the programs to qualify for funding. It's not like just anybody can call up and say, oh, good, I'd like 15,000. That requirements and parameters are extremely specific. They have to be shouldered by professionals and your organization makes sure that.
That is another one of the big things that we've been doing for 17 years now, I want to say, is that the LCFCC has been the applicant for grants from the liquor tax funds that are generated in this community and that are currently held for us and administered by NMRE. So, and, and we came together, and I, one of the, we are the longest funded grant that they've ever had. Sometimes they threaten to only fund things for three years, and that scares me a little bit. But, but one of the things that, that appealed to them about our grant request is that we pulled together people from the family court. We pulled together people from Glen Lake Schools, Sutton's Bay Schools, Leland Public Schools, Northport used to be in it, but they have said that they're fine, thank you, at the current time, and they've said that for several years, and then now Lyft, as they've come onto the scene. And so we put together a package that says, you know, we'll oversee the use of this money that has to be used for very specific purposes. We'll oversee all the reporting and making sure that everybody gets paid when they're supposed to get paid. And so, yeah, we've been doing that for a long time now.
It takes very specific know-how.
I think I had some questions on structure before. I'm not sure how, I'm not sure who are members, how they become members. Is, can you shed some, I know that we appoint one of our, our people, no, commissioner?
We do, Mr. Evans, yes.
Okay. But other, how many organizations are involved with?
I cannot tell you an exact number off the top of my head, but basically, anybody, anybody belongs at this table. It is primarily people like Child and Family Services, the Family Court, the Community Mental Health, Goodwill, Leland Christian Neighbors. The schools are invited. It, it is, it is a coalition open to anybody who is interested in working together to make things better for Leland County citizens. And we did broaden our scope several years ago. As I said, early on, when, when these groups were formed, they were very child and family-specific. But we've opened up our look to everybody in the community. So basically, you reach out to me and say, hey, I want to be part of this, and I say, great, come on in.
Are you are you a function of government? Are you officially somehow?
We are a weird animal. As, as I mentioned, when, well, when we were first formed, and, and so we have an executive committee made up of people who are chosen from the group, who belong to organizations. Right now, it's actually kind of a small committee right now, but right now, Michelle Klein from Benzie Leland Health Department, Mary Stanton from Leland Christian Neighbors, and Tricia Denton, who is currently just a community member at large, I shouldn't say just, are the core of that team. Man, I'm going to forget where I was going with.
Try to remember because I can't remember.
Yeah.
I think I, yeah, yeah.
What's our structure?
Well, with your money, there's a lot of times, you know.
That's a big one, yes. So, because we don't legally exist on paper. We are not incorporated. We were not actually in statute. We were by policy of the state government. So we, we truly are this, this weird animal that needs to survive by the fiduciary kindness of others. At the current time, United Way is holding our money for us. It's been several different entities in the past. We're getting a pretty good deal with them right now. They charge us 1% of receipts into our account is all they're charging us to do that, which is one reason, and I said, my jobs all intersect. When the county decided that, that they did not want to directly administer the Substance-Free Leland Coalition anymore, and we looked at, okay, who, you know, where could the money be handled for that? We took that on LCFCC, said we'll run it through our account. The other, other option we were looking at was Catholic Human Services, and they charged 10% for fiduciary fees. So 10, 1% is greater than 10% in that case. So, but yeah, and, and hopefully, United Way will continue doing that. Fingers crossed. I've heard that there is an organization there going to stop paying fiduciary for, so I'm wondering, but.
I, I tried to find information online and.
We're very mysterious.
Yeah, I did very well on, on that. And in particular, I tried to find information about your meetings to see if people might attend meetings or if they were posted. And I didn't do very good in that direction either.
Yeah, we're, we're not legally a public body. I know that sometimes the agendas have been posted here in your window because the county always gets them. Other than that, anybody can be added to my mailing list. There used to be the county website, the old version, used to actually have a page for us. I don't think there's a page right now. Does it still? I will get on that, yeah, because that would be good, and, and you guys provide me with an email address, so thank you. That's helpful.
And at our last meeting, we had some, this will be my last question. I don't, I'm trying to.
I was just going to say, I still get the reasons.
Oh, do you? Yeah, then I can.
I can add you to the mailing list.
Yeah.
Sure. Sure.
At our last, well, when we did the, when we renewed or approved the contracts for the opioid settlement, we had some provisions for information about 2025 and then, or 2024. And some reason we were very late in approving the 2025 contract. But you're aware of those, and that shouldn't be a problem?
I know that at one of your recent meetings, you had a great presentation from the Michigan Municipal League, I believe it was, about their advice for using the opioid funds, which I have also had.
It was the county association.
The county association. And I know I've been at some of their presentations too, which are great. And the Substance-Free Leland and me and the LCFCC, you know, we would like to be as, as much help as we can in helping to administer those funds, whether they're granted to us or somebody else in an efficient and appropriate manner. I know that there was a question about the need to redo the agreement every year, just kind of say, yes, it's still going. And we got all the paperwork signed, but I'm not aware of the specific other questions, if there are any.
If you could throw up with our administrator, maybe, and, and so you can have that information to you, but I think that request is coming up quick, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, thank you. I was just wondering, do you know how much money is in your account at this time?
In the account for specifically the opioids or overall? For the opioids, we currently have We have only requested half of our allocation for this year, so we've only received 32,000 of the 2025 allocation. I do have some requests coming in for some public programs, particularly in the schools, that would expend some of that money that I, that we have not evaluated yet.
Because according to the information you give us here, you receive 96,000, and you've spent 35, um, total on the, your expenses here.
I've got that we've spent 51, for 89.13.
Oh, I don't have that. When I hold these up, it comes to just under 35,000.
There should be four pages.
Okay.
Hopefully.
So that would be, yeah.
And there is a, there is a, there's a total at the bottom of the. I have some copies, I know.
What are experiential groups?
So experiential groups are like.
I have, not five.
Oh, okay. Okay. Things like what Lyft does. So Lyft and actually the family court. So kids going fishing, kids going to the climbing wall in Traverse City, other things like that. A lot of the prevention, a lot of modern prevention work is based on the idea, not that you just don't tell people drugs are bad, don't do it. You know, you've got to figure out what it is that they're missing in their life that they're filling with drugs or other substances, and help them build their skills and confidence and connections to others in the community so that that space won't be empty. And help, you know, taking them to do these things in a group with their peers and with mentors, and helping them discover passions and things that they, you know, are good at doing, and slipping in a little bit of don't do that talk in the meantime, is one of the basic ways that we get that work done.
So, and that's you work with the public schools and Leland, Sutton's Bay, and Glen Lake, really?
Yep. So most of that work is, Lyft is doing a lot of the work in Sutton's Bay. And, well, actually, in all of those schools, Sutton's Bay, Northport, Leland, and Glen Lake. With my, this is now not with your money, but with my CHS hat on, I am also doing a lot of work directly in the Leland Public Schools. I'm running every week two groups, one group for middle school boys and one group for high school boys who've been specifically identified as not making the best choices in life. And then I'm also, we're going to be running in November for the second time, a program called Catch My Breath, which is an educational program, an anti-vaping program, and we're going to run that for all the sixth graders and all the ninth graders because we think those are some very formative times. And then if somebody, and I'm available to do this at any school, just so happens that right now, Leland is the one that I have the closest relationship with. If somebody gets caught breaking the policy against substance use, particularly vaping, then they get to spend some time with me, one-on-one or two-on-one, depending on how many of them get caught at the time, and getting some deep, in-depth knowledge about the subject, so. And then I know John Boonstra from the Family Court. He's in a lot of the schools all the time doing the same kind of things. So along with the Lyft coordinators, who are there all day, every day in each school, along with running the after-school programs. We've got quite a network. And I understand that you're hoping that the sheriff will maybe possibly do some more of that programming all inside us in the school. So, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Next up, we got.
Next up, we got health insurance. We had hoped today to have, uh, in fact, we scheduled the discussion of our health insurance for this meeting, so we had hoped we would have the, uh, renewal data from Blue Cross Blue Shield. I met yesterday with our consultant, Lou Walters. He indicated he didn't have that data, but he was getting some feedback from Blue Cross Blue Shield. And it's equivocal information at the, at the present time. And, and leave some interpretation as to what he's being told. We'll see when we get the renewal. Currently, as I think you're aware, we primarily have a $20,000 stop loss program where we pay everything up to $20,000 and then a premium for stop loss coverage. Approximately, I believe, at 2025 was $1,200 per contract pays, then everything above that. We've done some, some analysis of that. But primarily, the analysis we've done is what would happen if we had to move that stop loss number up. And based upon what I heard from Lou yesterday, I think the most likely occurrence will be that we'll be asked to move that number to another figure. Increasing it to probably $30,000 at least, maybe more, uh, which will put us at a higher risk for larger claims. The, the basis for that conclusion was Lou telling me that he has been told by Blue Cross Blue Shield that we are, the words that he used, that he says came from Blue Cross Blue Shield, but where we were maxed out on our, on our stop loss. Trying to figure out what that actually means, the only thing that makes any sense to me is that what's maxed out is that Blue Cross Blue Shield cannot charge us anymore for the stop loss than what they're already charging us. But the cost to them to provide the stop loss at that rate exceeds the premiums that they're paying. I think that that's probable, what that means when Blue Cross is telling us we're maxed out. You, to understand that, you have to know what the federal regulation of, of both private insurance, like Blue Cross Blue Shield, and self-insured plans looks like. If, to qualify as a self-insure, insured plan, we have to really beat a test for self-insurance. So, you could in theory have a stop loss of $1,000. That would basically be like having an insurance, liability insurance policy that paid everything but a $1,000 deductible. If you had that, you would really not be self-insured. You'd really be fully insured and would have to be treated as a fully insured plan. I don't know if that concept makes sense. I think what they're telling us is we're getting to the point where, where by having $20,000 as our stop loss, we can no longer really truly be considered as a self-insured plan, because the cost of providing the insurance to ensure the balance of potential claims is too high. That's, I think, the first concept you're gonna have to understand for us to move on, is that, first of all, does that make sense? Not that, not that it's what, uh, you want to hear, but that's what I think we're going to be told by Blue Cross, because they haven't provided, provided our, our renewal to us. Lou has asked them to provide, provide renewals at 20,000, 30,000, 50,000 and above. And what we found was, let's assume for a moment, the, the only one that I've actually looked at is if they were to require us to, to have a $75,000 stop loss plan and then ensure the, at the premium above that, that would cost us about another $500,000 based upon last year's, the 2024 and through 2000, and the amounts through 2025. At least about a $500,000 increase in, in claims payable costs. So, the question is, can we reduce the stop loss premium sufficiently that it would not, that, that the amount we're paying for stop loss would be lowered by half a million dollars? If we can do that, we could maintain the same coverage, have a, we have to accept a higher risk, because that's the only thing we could, that's the only way we could obtain insurance at our coverage and at that coverage, at the coverage levels that we offer. But the cost could ultimately be the same. We don't have that information yet, but that's what we're, that's what we're looking at.
I, I was wondering, do we, do we know how much we paid last year on claims payable, you know, per person?
The total budget was, we actually budgeted for 2025, I believe, it's $2.3 million.
Adjusted.
Yeah, adjusted, the adjusted budget is $2.3 million. We, based upon the information he has today, Lou believes that that actual amount come out to be 101, 1.9 million. So, about $400,000 less. Now, that's a combination of claims paid, reinsurance paid, plus the administration fee and a few other, you know, miscellaneous fees that are fairly inconsequential. That's a total package amount, about, about, uh, 2.3 million budgeted, and probably the actual cost will be 1.9 billion. So, our, our goal has been to try to maintain that budget cost as much as possible and not change, not change the benefits that we offer to the employees under the program. That's been our goal, and we were hoping to be able to provide you that information today. We just don't have it, have it yet.
Well, we did stay within budget for.
So far, yes. That's it. We're projected to be within budget for the 2025. The concern that we have is that we won't be able to obtain at the same budgeted amount, we won't be able to obtain, uh, a $20,000 stop loss. That's, that's our concern. Uh, and we will know more about that. I, I've asked Jen to reach out, uh, directly to Blue Cross and, and Lou is actually, you know, reaching out again. We're hoping, did we actually schedule a meeting or not?
I did schedule a meeting for next week, but can I interrupt?
Yep. Please. You've got information that we haven't discussed yet.
So, I did get an email back from Jennifer Lutz. She's our Blue Cross Blue Shield, um, manager for the area, I guess. And she sent the renewal to Lou today.
Okay.
So, he should have his, um, interpretation of that and a good discussion for us by next week, he thought. And we have scheduled.
What I anticipate we'll do then is we will, we will be, uh, meeting with Lou next week, sometime next week. And I'll probably be sending you by email at least what administration's recommendation will be regarding that. And we'll work it into the budget as, as we, and, and, you know, as we can. The other thing we wanted to talk, we did provide you today with, with the summary of the feedback we got from employees. And Jen, I guess, I guess you can also address this as well. We, we, I believe, 95 responses, is that what it says?
I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but.
91. One shoe.
Yeah. So. I sent out 95 requests. That's how many people we had in the plan at the time that the survey was forwarded to the employees. I don't think I got 95 responses back. I'm pretty sure it was closer to 60, so about two-thirds of the people responded to the survey. Some people responded with a comment, and I listed all the comments in the sections below. So, everything everyone told me or that came back to my office is written there. The people who actually voted with, I would prefer this option versus this option, is a summary at the top of that page. So, it looks like the majority of people would prefer, um, if a change has to be made, that five-tier drug card, which was discussed last year.
The other document that we passed to you was the, was a 2025, um, comparison to several other, um, counties, actually, with various, various numbers, anywhere from 114, which is a little bit more than our, our census within the, within our plan. We have 100, roughly 100 contracts, up to a 500, uh, planned participant. And the variation in what those other counties, uh, charge or, or expenses that are incurred by their, by their, um, employees and the, and some of the things that are covered. Again, I, I'll say this again, we want to emphasize to all employees that may be listening or acquiring, uh, a view of this in the future. We would prefer very much to not change the benefits that we provide at all. The renewal is going to dictate a lot of what we can or cannot do, what we have to, with finance analyze the actual cost to us and the potential risk if we have to change the, change the stop losses and needs of, of controlling costs. But, uh, that's pretty much what we know so far. I don't know if there's any questions I can answer regarding that. I wish we had a complete answer for you today. But it is probably more directed that our finance director, you said, what was our, our, our budget current?
2.2 million adjusted.
And what was the original budget going into?
I'm gonna say 1.8.
So, that, that was a huge adjustment sometime during the year. And what is in our budget book for next year? I don't remember.
Uh, 1.8.
Exactly, isn't it close? It's closer to 1.9, I think. But it's, it's between 1.8, 1.9.
So, we spent 2.2 last year, but in this year's budget, we're below what we spent last year.
No, we haven't. No, we haven't yet. We're projected for 2025 to be around 1.9 million.
Oh.
Yes. We don't know the full amount of our projection, because again, this can be very, and, and one of the problems with these kind of insurance plans, or any insurance plan, is a lot of times, uh, you know, because benefits reset at the beginning of the next plan year, you have a high number of claims that it can, the last two months of the, of the, but even with that, uh, our, our consultant, Mr. Walters suggests will probably be around 1.9 again this year. So, what he emphasizes is that we generally have been fairly flat in terms of budget amounts that we've spent over the years. He attributes that largely to having the very low stop loss. The problem is, we don't think that's gonna be available to us anymore. We priced that, it's been priced out of the, out of the market. So, if that does occur, we may have to accept two things, a little bit more risk and a little bit more variability in the budget from year to year, because our costs will be much more dependent on the claims submitted than the stop loss insurance that, that we have.
Maybe a directed question, uh, directed to our HR director, and this is just my gut feeling, but I think everyone's getting a little bit older and I, and that goes for our workforce also.
Okay. It's fair to say.
Yeah, yeah. So, that, I mean, what I'm saying is that this isn't something that is gonna be a one-year anomaly, uh, as, uh, not just the county ages, but those who work for the county also. I, I was just wondering, if, if you're saying we're getting priced out of the stop loss, does that mean that, that it's too, getting too expensive for the 20,000 of stop loss? Or that, I mean, I guess I'm not sure what that means.
What I think it means, and again, we don't have, this is information from Blue Cross to our consultant filter to him and back to me. I think what it means is, in order to continue to be considered a, a true self-insured plan, Blue Cross cannot charge us any more than they already are charging us for a $20,000 stop loss. And they're losing money on, on us. The claims made over and above 20,000 exceed the amount that they can collect for premiums. And that, I believe, is most likely, most likely what they mean by pricing out, being priced out of that market. So, what that means is they'll have to, will have to increase the stop loss in order to continue on a program like that. That'll reduce somewhat the, the, the stop loss premium that we pay, but also put us, make us at risk for paying that additional, that additional amount. So, in theory, if you have 100 contracts and we have $10,000 more in stop loss, we would have at risk another $1 million more than we are at risk now. That's why I say you're probably gonna have to, if that happens, you're gonna have to accept a lot more variability in the budgeted amount than we've had in the past because of that, that, that risk. It's, it's not terrible news, but it's not good news either. And, and, and with, and I hope we'll be getting that renewal data very soon, so we'll know exactly what, what that does mean. I, I, I consider not having this item on, on the agenda today, but I thought it was important that you at least get the information that we have now, because that could inform your ultimate decision.
Right, I guess I'd like to have that definite information. I don't want to be guessing about.
Certainly not gonna make any decisions about that. Okay. Certainly I can make any decisions about that, for sure.
I just have a question for the minutes. So, is that the December renewal then, is when it normally comes to the board? That's what's going in the minutes?
Our, I don't, I don't understand.
Uh, we always do the Blue Cross Blue Shield renewal in December. Is that when, is that what was, is gonna be discussed then?
Whether we would do the renewal in December or not, we still have the budget for it by the time we adopt our budget. Yes, the renewal will come in December. We still have the budget for our budget in November.
Stairs quote, gotcha.
Yes, because you're, we, we are a bit unusual, because a lot, most insurance plans will end in January. We actually ended in February. So, we have a two-year, our two-month overlap of our, our budget. We still have to approve, yeah, that renewal in our. All right. Any other questions for administrator HR? All right, next up, we have budget recommendations. We've got a couple to discuss. Uh, we wanted really hope to accomplish a couple of things. I discuss a, a couple expense budgeter, budget changes. And I sent, I sent you all an email today. I sent you all an email today about that.
I just wanna make sure they all have last weeks. If they didn't bring.
Oh, wait. No, I don't want the.
This is the same as what you got last week.
Do you, Jim, do you have a copy of that for me? That email?
What email?
That you just spoke.
No, I don't.
This is the, okay, so the email is the draft form? Well, the emails that were sent that you just mentioned is this, this piece of paper?
No, it's not.
Oh, okay. I will not reference the email in my.
That's why I started first.
This is same. They all.
Okay.
And then you just take it.
It's fine. I'll have to know right back.
Now it's gonna screw it down. I, yes, again, the, the last thing we're going to do is, is go through the document that Jen presented to you. But the two recommendations. But the two recommendations, or the two items that we would like you to consider and give us some consensus on so we can use them to create a budget. The first is to directly address the study presentation, the sheriff name. And, and I'm recommending that what, what you do to address that is to eliminate the TNT budget for two reasons. The position is not going to be filled, and it was also, it was originally split off from the regular road patrol because it was a grant-funded position. We have the sheriff. Any questions or anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
What I'm recommending is that, again, we eliminate that position and transfer it as a full-time equivalent employee to the regular road patrol division. And then we fund two of those, we only budget a half-time position for two of those. It will be a total of eleven full-time equivalent employees as, as road patrol deputies. And for two of those positions, we budgeted them at fifty percent. Essentially represents the amount of the TNT budget. And I make that recommendation based upon an email that I received from the under sheriff recently, indicating that based upon anticipated vacancies throughout two thousand twenty-six, both retirements and new hires and, and, and new hires coming in or retirements going out, we'll have on average for the entire year, two vacancies, which will give us the opportunity to budget those positions at less than fifty percent because they're not going to be utilized to the full extent. They're not, we don't have all of those eleven positions in budget and assuming budget during, for the entire year. They believe that they can absorb that for this, just this year at, at those rates. Any, any questions about that? I believe that that's something that you and Jim have discussed and, and concur on. And that, that accomplishes two things. It gives you a little bit more in the, in the budget to do other things with that you might not otherwise be able to afford. And it also eliminates a position that we don't really need to budget anymore.
Charles?
Another thing could be added, because I've also fed some discussions with the under sheriff is we can save another seven thousand, I'm not giving others, there won't be that extra patrol car that he explained to me, so.
That's possible.
By going this way, so.
That's possible.
Yeah.
That's, that, that's really a discussion, a second discussion, a second item I don't want to discuss with you.
Sorry about that.
The, the other thing too, that we haven't discussed on the deputy or the road patrol side, they also believe they'll have, they'll have vacancies sufficient in the correction side that they can budget one position at fifty, fifty percent rather than four hundred percent. So you could conceivably save anywhere from another hundred to a hundred twenty thousand dollars of, of the law enforcement budget. And it's, it's my recommendation that you allow us to prepare the budget for your approval. The goal is to have a final budget in your hands and in the hands of the public for review by the end of this month. So you can have it for at least, you know, whatever, ten days or whatever before you have you have your official review of it during your executive session and then final approval of it. Your full review in November. You still think that we can accomplish that during that time if we have concurrence on some of, if we keep concurrence on this item and those others that will be discussed later on. So.
My question's been answered and, and this makes sense to me. Am I correct in assuming that on paper you're going to be one and a half positions less? Is that, no, just a half? No, on paper, because you're going to still add the, the school liaison, right?
Well.
Let me, let me, maybe I can address that. What, what we're going, what we're going to do is they're still having positions authorized to the same level as they're currently authorized. What you're going to do is budget about one and a half positions less on both road patrol and corrections on a budget basis, because that's really all they'll need to fund based, fund based, all you will need to fund based upon their anticipation of, of when they're going to fill those positions. And typically what you would do in a budget resolution that authorizes these positions, there would be a provision that says that department heads and elected officials, when they fill these positions, have to do so in relation to the budget that's provided. So for example, they want, they couldn't hire, they couldn't fill all eleven of those positions on January first of twenty twenty-six. And have to stagger those or have vacancies in other positions throughout the year. They'd have to manage that budget in a way that, that, that authorizes potentially up to eleven people at any given time. For the road patrol, for example. They'd have to budget the allocation of those funds as if there were only ten.
So the school liaison is a separate discussion?
It's up to the, it's up to the sheriff whether he wants to have a school liaison or not. He would have to fund that or have that officer within that, that, that road patrol budget. It would be his discretion as to how that budget is used. So. And what assignments, what assignments that officer would undertake.
Correct. So the TNT position, no one is in for it now. Nobody wants to be in for it. We didn't use it this year. That money's kind of neutral. My idea was not to lose that position. We would move that position to school liaison. However, discussing this with some of the commissioners, discussing this with the under sheriff, some of the lieutenant sergeants, we just need to have a deputy there that we place them in schools more at a different time of year, or more in a row, different time of year, depending on traffic, visitors to the county, school problems. Having that flexibility, I'd have that deputy to put them in whatever position that's in. Uh, so the idea I originally came to the board with was that we take the TNT position and just switch it to a school liaison. And this way it gives our agency more flexibility to meet the needs. When we're down on officers, we can't fill positions. It's very, very hard to fill positions right now. And we're just, I'm trying to recruit people who are from this area, who have property here and we're having trouble. So I think that gives us more flexibility. We don't want to short the schools, but certainly TNT is done. So that we call a school liaison position, not necessary. We'll just keep it as a deputy with assignments in the school sometimes.
So within our budget, when we assess our budget, we also approve positions, number of positions. Will that stay at eleven or just less amount budgeted for the eleven?
Correct. It'll stay, we'll approve the positions, budget less, and then there, there will be a position provision. And your budget resolution says a department head has to take into consideration when that position is going to start or end, frankly, based upon the budget that's, that's out. That way you can free up money that you know is not going to be spent. And you can more accurately estimate the true budget the sheriff is going to be to run the department, even though you've authorized the positions, because you know there are going to be vacancies. You know, I've, I've seen it in other counties that I've worked with where they manage much larger staffs, where they know they have, they're going to have on average throughout the year a certain number of vacancies. And they just don't budget those at, at, at full, at full price because that would take money away from other, take resources away from other, other budgets and, and, and freeze it in a, in basically dead money, because you know it's not going to be used.
I just, I mean, my only concern was not necessarily a concern as a change in philosophy and that we did loosen up the revenues and we're tightening, tightening up the expenses as far as how they'll play out over the next year. So there isn't going to be a lot of opportunity if you do get, if you do get. So we just got to be right in our budget. Let me just.
And, and based upon the feedback that we've got from the, the sheriff's department, this, this budgeting process will work for them. And it's one that they think they can, they can properly manage during two thousand twenty-six. Now, again, ideally, what we hope happens in two, for two thousand twenty-seven is they're going to be able to come back and tell us, we think we'll be fully staffed. We don't anticipate any cyclical vacancies. Please fund us at the full amount necessary to fund eleven, eleven positions within road patrol and not however many it is in, in corrections if we, if we take the one vacancy away. I'll tell you, based on my experience, you're never going to have that situation where you're fully staffed. You're always going to have some level of vacancies that you can, and, and the only question is, is it enough to save you any money? That's the only question you have to decide every, every year. It requires a couple of things. It requires real work for the sheriff's department. And they, they, they did a lot of work, obviously, in reviewing their, their budgets to come to this conclusion. I suggested this is a possibility to them. And they said that they would take a look at it very hard and see if it was something that they could do. And they concluded that they can. So Mike, are you going to work through those four hours and you took off every day now?
Yeah, that would be nice, wouldn't it?
Are there, and I, I understand what you're going to, it makes sense to me, but we're really in making a decision for two years from now.
Yes.
Because the sheriff will come to us and say, don't cut my level of staff.
Right.
And, and so it is a budget increase, but it's not an increase until twenty twenty-seven.
Even then, it wouldn't necessarily be a budget increase because it's an increase this year. You may have to return to twenty twenty-five budget levels in twenty twenty-seven, but you are going to be reducing the budget this year.
Twenty-six.
Yeah, twenty-six, you're going to be reducing the budget by at least eighty if you just do two half-funded sheriff's positions and possibly, and possibly at least a hundred and twenty if you also do a half-funded corrections position, which is what they're telling me for twenty twenty-six they can do. And again, this is exactly what the Uniform Budgeting Act asks you to do is with data, make estimates as to what is necessary to run the department. And we're hearing from the sheriff that, that that will be, that's what's necessary next year to run the department. But just don't cut this authorized staffing, but force him to actually staff those in accordance with the budget that you allocated. It's a, it's a, it's a bold, everybody wins when we do that. Your money?
Yeah, so, so if, Sheriff, if you found someone, you know, in January who, who wanted to, you know, who was a former deputy somewhere else who wanted to go, you, if we do this, you wouldn't be able to hire him full-time then?
No, we wouldn't be able to hire him, but that would restrain the, what he could do with the other, other.
Exactly, which is all he committed to. So if we budget this way, it's going to really restrain him if we can hire, when we can hire him.
As long, all he has to do is live within his budget, and it's the budget that he's saying that he can live within. So.
Give a suggestion motion.
Well, actually, I don't think you even need a motion. Just what we're, what we're asking you to do is to have a consensus. If yes, please prepare the final budget with this idea in mind. And if, unless there's an objection, that's what we would intend to do. Is that's the moment where to do that?
Well, I would object to not funding these, these positions fully. You know, that if he needs somebody that he can hire in January fully, I think that he should be able to do that. And I think restricting him to that, you know, that, that, that he may have agreed to it, but it could, could, he could lose an officer doing that, or someone who he's got in school that we're paying for right now.
And if, if that were to happen, you'd be in a position where he could come and ask for a budget amendment to, to hire that position if you want. You can do that. But this way, you're, you know, again, I asked them to give me their best estimate of what they need.
Or just a BIM pro act.
So.
Other questions on that? No, I think it says as well not to go in that direction.
Yeah.
All right.
The second item that we wanted you to consider is how we purchase, how we acquire the vehicles that we're going to budgeting. And what our suggestion is, I spent quite a long time with finance this, this afternoon working through this. What we're suggesting is we continue to budget the amount that we would is currently proposed to acquire four, I believe it's four police vehicles and one Tacoma for the building safety department. We're going to budget that amount, assuming we make purchases. But having reviewed the proposal from Enterprise to do a managed fleet lease vehicle program, if we can determine, if we can negotiate a contract that is neutral as to cost of leasing versus the cost of acquiring by purchase, then we would enter into a contract to do that with, with, with Enterprise to actually lease those, those vehicles. We're not prepared today to tell you whether we will do that or not because it's going to take a lot of, a lot of negotiation with, with Enterprise to see if that is even possible. But if it is, we'll come back to you with a either, if we can do it by the time we approve the budget in November, we'll actually amend the budget to reflect that, 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 that change. If not, we'll come to you with a budget amendment and a contract for approval and consideration. And I don't think you need to take any action for that. I'm just telling you this is what we intend to do and the basis that we're going to use to make a decision and a recommendation to. If we pursue and do, do pursue the leased route, obviously in this, this year, we would, we would save somewhere potentially as much as three hundred thousand dollars, depending on how many vehicles we actually purchase. Because remember, the enterprise representative suggested to us that, that for leasing ten vehicles now would be the way to really get that, that, that process to work the way it's supposed to. Because again, the advantage is we can purchase at such a price. The, the best way that I can describe it, and I described it today during my meeting with finance, is we can buy these vehicles essentially at wholesale cost, but when we sell them, we sell them at the retail cost and, and the consumer retail cost. They actually showed us an example of one vehicle that they, they purchased. It's a thirty-four thousand dollar truck that has a resale value after two years of twenty-seven thousand dollars, which is the amount that you can, that's what you acquire it at twenty-seven thousand dollars. And it retains that value through two, for two years. So they actually have some custom, some, some, some counties actually do that. Buy the vehicles, roll them over after two years and basically pay nothing for a vehicle for that, for that two-year period. And we're not suggesting that we can do that with every one of our vehicles. But that's what a managed lease program can do for you. You know, because as, as the longer you hold that vehicle, the more, every year it reduces the amount that you can, that you can, that you can get in return. That same truck that you can, you can sell in, in, in the second year for the same amount that you purchased, two years later, or three years later, when it's five years old, you could sell for eighteen thousand dollars and roll that money into the purchase of the next, the next truck that replaced it. So properly done, we think that this is a way that you can save money and actually have a better fleet than what you have right now. So we'd like you to, we'd like to see if we can make that work. If we can, we'll be coming back to you with a proposal, a, a contract and a budget amendment. If we can't, then we've already budgeted the purchase of the vehicles that we are budgeting now.
There, there's one caveat to that, that we have to transfer all the radios equipment from hard car. You know, shorter duration, we'll have to figure that.
Your short iteration, we'll have to figure that math into it. We can't give you that answer now till we talk to Enterprise.
Yeah, and they did say, they did say that they they are able to do all of that with the same vendors that we could use. And they we gave them the cost, what we what we currently spend to up equip the vehicle after the purchase of it. And they will figure that into the cost of the vehicle. And so we'll actually be paying for that over the whatever life that we, the four-year or five-year life of the vehicle that we anticipate using in the uh using in that management or lease program.
Well, as I, I mentioned it when this was brought up as a proposal, that this would be I I I don't feel comfortable until we actually go off our request for proposals. This is a huge amount of money. And it sound, pardon me, but it sounds like you've already selected a vendor.
They are, we 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 have selected them primarily. They are, they already are are vetted through the through a purchasing program that we already participated in.
Well, you know, I, we need to go and and look around a little bit rather than have one presentation and then that becomes our vendor. We need to open it up for other.
We'd be certainly happy to do that.
Yeah, I I I feel much.
I'm not aware of anybody that does, I'm not aware of anybody that does, whatever my say, I know.
Yeah, yeah, because when you add it all up, it'll be one of our biggest contracts.
You're all there, is your money?
I'm glad you're going to research this carefully. But I, it sounds like our parents won't be as old. And it just, it's always made sense to me.
Do you mind?
No, I, I mean, it's always, in in my business, always owning the car is much better than leasing. It always works out better and ends up much, much cheaper. And I, you know, especially if you put any kind of mileage on it at all. So, I mean, I I I don't know how much they average a year, but usually the lease doesn't, they limit you to your mileage. So.
There's no limit after, there's no limit.
There's no limit, but I mean, but then but then you sell it.
Then you have a sell point.
Right. It it comes down to only those two years and then you're at a, you know, a hundred thousand miles and they say you've got to sell it. So it, you know, and we're, if it's in great shape, we have any problems, then it's just going to cost us. And I I don't see where, um, we own all of these cars now. You know, and and we're talking, if we get four more, we get two hundred fifty thousand. Then we sell those, the the three or four or whatever, plus we're we're turning one over to nine one one for emergency management. So I I just always like owning better than leasing.
Well, if I could just say, I want to work, the under sheriff does our budgeting on our cars. Administrator Dyer's very good to work with. I I want to do what's most, I want a safe car for the deputies. I want to do what's most economically beneficial for the county. So I am not dug in on any brand type thing. I'll say better minds at that will figure that out, come to me and I'll either approve it or deny it, and we'll come to you. But we'll give you a more of a, you're, it's vague right now. It's very hard for you to look at this and make a decision or think a lot about it till we give you more details. And honestly, we don't know until we try to negotiate a contract, see what other vendors are out there, if there are, and see if this is going to save us money or not. And make sure that we don't get burned somehow, that, you know, somehow this some cost wasn't fair that we didn't see upfront, right? So what I want is safe vehicle for deputies, that's my only ask, is, you know, that we keep a vehicle with a reasonable amount of mileage. We don't run them past like one thirty, a hundred thirty thousand because of national standards and frame components, things like that. That's all I ask for. So we'll work on that, see what we can do that's the most economical for the county and safest for deputies.
Were you aware of any department that's already in that? Any members? Besides, and other counties have got, they provided numerous, numerous recommendations. I'm following all those down. Antrim County just just signed up, Washtere County's involved, Grand Travers County's involved. Some of them have have been recent converts to it. Others have been in the program for years.
Well, I wanted to say, we've been here for years, we ought to, we ought to explore this. I'm glad you are doing it. There is a reason so many other counties are doing it. Thank you.
And and again, the main reason, and I not to not to contradict Commissioner Mike, if I could buy, if I was able to buy at the same at the same cost that Enterprise can buy the cars, I'd buy them every day. I can, and neither can any of you. And that's the, that's really the difference. And the last thing I'll say, unless there are other questions, is I I firmly believe that you should be charging the cost for acquiring a vehicle, charging it in the year that it's actually used on a budget basis. Otherwise, what you're doing, you have a big block of purchases one year that you're you're essentially purchasing as 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 i- i- your purchasing isn't like you're purchasing paper or pencils. But it's a, it's a durable, it's a durable asset that should be allocated over its life rather than the year it's purchased. That's really, I think that's really the problem with with buying them outright. But that's a, that's obviously a decision you have to make. But you don't have to make that today. We'll be presenting you a specific proposal regarding that. And if and if we can find other other vendors who potentially potentially did that out, if there are those that exist.
So you would prepare an RFP and does that have to come to us? Does that all that work?
Well, that's one thing that I I'm not prepared to discuss today, but I I really think you should authorize the administration to seek RFPs without your approval and ultimately, you have to approve the contract and then the vendor selected. But it's it's burdensome and too much of a delay to actually get authorization to do the RFP, then authorization to do the acceptance, then authorization to do the contract.
We've kind of been doing this for a long time. I really don't see such a deadline for it. It takes two months or it takes three months. We kind of find with that and and I would.
They are, and you have, you have.
We've, they've come before us, yes. We just did.
Four percent.
And, yeah, but anyways, but there is another factor. It's not just the cost of the of the liver, the difference in cost of the vehicles. There's also a profit to be made by Enterprise. So it's not strictly just just the cost of the vehicles. I don't know how that works out, but I'm not trying to, I I do appreciate looking, looking at what, because I I think in the long term, we have to, we have to look at it in the long term and make a decision based on the long term. But I I don't see a hurry to do this in the next two months or whatever.
And that's why we did not want to link it to, link it to the approved budget.
That's smart, that's good.
Commissioner Robbins?
And we're talking about the lease, but I just thought of something here. You know, we're talking earlier about the position. So if we deal away with that position, TNT truck, probably go to marine. So I think what we may be forgetting here is that's where we don't need that for patrol car. If we give you the position and that vehicle goes over, so we could be talking three instead of four.
That's a possibility to that.
Any other comments or, I guess you were just looking for consensus that and everybody gave a that.
Mr. Russell?
Well, we've said there's, there's not a rush, but we do need to evaluate it before we go ahead and purchase.
Yes.
Cars.
Sure.
So in that regard, we ought to, we ought to do it quickly. I I prefer we authorize administrator to explore and go out for bids and then they'll approve whatever contract.
That's what, yes.
I don't think we do that right here this meeting, though.
That's not what it said.
Okay.
It's like, did he will this far and then we'll approve what just what what decisions, options we have. He'll bring the options back to us and we'll approve it then.
Yes.
But we need to move forward now and ask consensus that we move forward, that the guy do his job.
I agree.
We don't need to vote on that, it's just we had to have a consensus. And then we'll have a decision on it or we can vote on it when we have any options in front of us.
I believe the administrator has given some good acts, good options. We're on our own time, if you want to do our homework. I mean, we're going to call Grand Travers, Antrim and the other counties and see how they're, you know, if it can work for them, see if they like it, pros and cons.
If you get the same product cheaper, it's the same product, that's what the goal is.
Final ball.
Yep.
The 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 last, I I said, that was the last word, I did forget one thing. Assuming we do present to you a proposal to use the lease option in this first year, we'll obviously be saving some dollars in capital expenditures because we won't be purchasing, I mean, if we just, if it were four patrol vehicles and one truck, I think the total cost for that was around three hundred thousand dollars. If we leased them, the cost would be about thirty seven thousand. So we save potentially two hundred sixty thousand dollars. If we did that, we would take that money and make sure it's allocated to be used only for 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 the fund four seventy projects that are capital in nature or projects permitted by your capital improvement policy or lease payments for the vehicles themselves. It would, that money would be restricted in its use and not used for operational operational purposes, but but for capital, capital funding, that'd be part of the proposal that we make too, so.
I'm I'm not following that math. You're you're saying that if we rent, if we lease ten vehicles.
No, no, four, five. Five, four patrol vehicles and one and one Tacoma.
And it's going to cost us.
About thirty seven thousand.
Thirty, so so you're saying.
Between thirty seven and fifty, I don't remember, Kathy, you remember, it was something, something.
Rounded up.
Roughly fifty thousand or less. If we if we lease ten, it'd be about a hundred thousand.
So it's only a thousand dollars a month per vehicle.
Precisely, yes. It's a little bit more for, it's a little bit less for the trucks, a little bit more for patrol vehicles.
I just think it's important to realize that this isn't, this isn't magic money.
No.
It means that we don't have those vehicles as an asset. Uh, and that's what we're doing. We're moving from vehicles as an asset to they're not.
I want to correct that a little bit. That is not actually true. They remain an asset. In fact, by by the contract with with Enterprise, we retain a por- a portion of the resale cost that they obtain. And they, that goes, that gets, that can get rolled back into the purchase price. And this is not a closed-end lease like you get, like a consumer gets at. And it's it's actually an open-ended lease. And it's really best viewed less as a lease that you're familiar with when you go lease a car. It's really a means of financing the vehicles rather than, I I wish we didn't have to use the word lease, but legally we do because they own the vehicles and we make a payment to them. So that is a lease. But it's really more like you're purchasing them on an installment purchase agreement. It's much more like that. That is, that is a closed-end lease.
Well, yeah, face it. So if we have ten cars that we sell this year, that we paid seventy thousand dollars a piece for, and we're selling them this year because they're an asset, and we're getting four thousand dollars a piece for them, because that's all they go for. They're not really an asset. I mean, we beat the, we beat that horse. And it's done, it's been a longer function for it. So it's not really an asset. It's just, it's, we consumed it.
But the new ones aren't an asset either.
Right.
They're not an asset because they're not carried on our books as a, as an asset. But they do, they are an asset in the sense that we we can retain the sales cost or excuse me, the sales proceeds from them at a percentage based, on a percentage basis.
Right, right, it's not, it's not our vehicles to sell. Enterprise gets the money where they sell it.
They want to sell.
No, that's not true because because we're leasing.
That's not true. We get a portion of that.
We get a portion, but we won't get it all.
It's like ninety five percent or something like that. It's 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 determined by each vehicle. And that's what a managed fleet process is all about. We do, they, we, they are not, they are not balance sheet assets, but they can be used to fund purchasing new vehicles.
I recall too that he said, like a police car, they only run for eighty thousand miles. They don't run it for one period.
The lease program.
You're going to have newer cars.
You're going to have newer cars. I think the the wisest thing Commissioner Robbins was talking about, he'll do some legwork, maybe some of you will. Contact some other agencies who have done this. Why did you do it? Does it work? Are you glad you did it? Do you regret it? What, you know, did you lose assets? Did you gain and get them cheaper? Ask around. I I challenge anybody to do that and see, let's get the best deal for the county while still giving deputies a safe car. I'm very simple, like that song. I'm just, I want, simple man.
You also get on every characteristic.
Maybe eight thousand. I may should be counting.
Yeah.
My best, you know, my best. All right. You got to bring this to order here, but I I mean, from the consensus I gather from my colleagues here is that they support you looking at this because it ultimately comes back to the board for a fine decision. So I think that's the best thing to move forward here. We go on and see what you, what information you can gather for us to make a final decision on that. So I I'm a hundred percent in support of that because I think there's too many questions that are unanswered right now. And it would be helpful to give you the reins to go out there and find answers to some of those questions, so.
And that's what we concluded in our meeting, my meeting with the finance department today, that until we have, until we can actually write a specific contract, specific terms, there is no way to determine if it makes financial sense.
Do we have consensus also that we need an RFP? We need to give other companies an opportunity to become involved, to bid?
If that's the whole pursuit.
I just didn't hear him say that.
That's possible, yes. So.
We investigate all that. We, if if they re- approve them when they're.
I know, I just want, I just want to verify that we're getting our RFPs, that's all.
Right, from my understanding, that's what the administrator will do is to go up, see if there are any companies that do that, you know, and come come back to us with that. But right now, we, from my understanding, he's not even sure there are. So that's something, if we go on from it, you know, there may not even be that out there. Uh, so I don't want to tie bar his hands or us as the board. I don't really think so. So.
Yes.
And from my understanding, there's consensus to do that, so.
Yeah. Go for it. I made that note.
All right. Thanks. Um. Anything else under recommendations?
No, the other, the last thing that we want to do is go through the list that Kathy has prepared unresolved items. I went through that with her today. We have a lot of information and some recommendations, but there are still some things that we need to do.
Your email, that last paragraph?
What's that?
Pichorca? Judge?
That's on the list.
Oh, okay.
Called, that's on the list.
Okay, I have a question too. We have not talked about what our allocation for the health department at all.
That's not the question.
Is that on this list because?
If you mean, if you're talking about allocation for early childhood.
No, no, for our allocation for the.
I can tell you, I can tell you, I can tell you that they have requested a five percent increase, I believe, to include that.
I'm sorry, I can't, I don't recall that, but I can look into it.
You talked about it, so I'm pretty sure that it was included.
And they've had severe, severe cuts.
They have, and again, they requested a five percent lease increase in their allocation. I I indicated to Dan that we would do that in our budget request.
I'd like to just double check that I did that.
Yeah, and if if not, please do.
At the risk of it stretching into fifteen minutes, could we take a five minute break?
Think about it, we need to catch up, what you need there, Kathy.
Okay, no more coffee.
Especially glad that wasn't me.
I couldn't have it since we're too. If it wasn't for me.
It would have been you.
We would have been done.
I think that's fine, yeah. You guys would have just gotten in trouble anyways, so.
Probably not.
It's like you got it all.
I'm trying.
That's all we can do.
Yeah. Still golfing? It's still golfing? Still golf weather?
It is, but I'm not a golfer.
Unbelievable. I can't, I can't believe this fall, sign me up for this forever.
But I did finally get my boat out of the water.
Did you?
I'm extending this. We're going to San Diego on Sunday for three weeks.
What are you going to do?
Well, we're going to be in Carlsbad. We're going to spend a week in the. And then we go to Salton. But I'm going to extend this.
Thank you. Just bring some of this back.
Supposed to be 70 there. That's perfect.
Really? Nice.
70 is perfect.
Yeah. You know that song, I forget who sings it, Sunny and 75? There's a song called Sunny and 75. It's an awesome song. That's about the ideal temperature for.
That's, that's pretty perfect.
Yeah. I like these cool nights we've had, like last night, I sleep with my head this far from the window and the window wide open. I just love. Sleep so much better than when it's hot.
Yes. You know what? I grew up with windows open. I'm married to a man who's extremely allergic to everything.
Oh, that's fun.
We spent lots of extra money when we built our house, giving screens for every window because my plan was to have all the windows open all the time.
Yep, and he's got air conditioning.
And I've never used them. So I never have a window, but it's just besides.
Ever use those things?
What things?
See that black thing?
What is it?
So when COVID was big, we got a grant, we bought those, you know, we have them around, we use them because of science allergies. There's always something Michigan can do.
What's it called? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
And I remind you. But again, is there any other benefits?
Because it was finer filter.
That's your new boombox?
Yeah.
I remember you know the limits.
With your car filter, you know, when you put it on. Is this Enterprise leasing? Where are they based on?
Absolutely said. An office in, I'm assuming. I think that's what it said.
There is an Enterprise, but I didn't know if it was the same, you know, operating the same Enterprise. Normal rentals.
Different program.
Yeah.
It's a different program, the second one is in here.
I just couldn't remember if he said where he was frosted. I can't, I'm not sure.
Not, not current city, I didn't. Yeah, something like that.
My daughter is very frustrated with the lack of vaccines because she's in the medical field. So it's like, but there are certain things, you know, it's how it was delivered. That was the problem. How it was delivered? You have to do this rather than, here's the facts.
Except you know what? They were knocking on doors when people had tuberculosis and putting people in insane, in a silence.
Yeah, what do you call it? Not intermittent cancer, but yes. And then the same thing in 1918?
Yeah.
Same thing.
That's when my uncle died at six weeks, you know, 1918, in the flu.
I was down doing a security risk assessment. I had SWAT training last week downstate. And I went to the LDS. Okay, I went to the LDS church site down there and we were doing it and we were talking about all the things over there. And I looked at the pictures of like churches.
So my dad lost his mother when he was 20 months old.
So we had to put down. Yeah. That's the people immigrated here from our church and they came from Europe. That's how they founded our church in 1960. And a lot of those people saw plagues in Europe, there's plagues here. Look at the number of people. And that, that was taken right off the church wall.
Which church?
St. Nicholas Orthodox Church.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, so most of them came here around 1915 to 1920.
That's when we let immigrants in.
Thank goodness when you go to Cedar.
Yes.
Welcome them because they wanted to work.
Yes, workers. Show you this real quick.
Yeah, I think we're going to end up.
I always wait till I get it.
I think they want to start a meeting again.
You ready?
Five minutes left?
I didn't even count. I just learned not to count at least a case. All right, Mr. Money, do you have a question?
Well, I, I just wanted to, you know, I'm looking at the list that she has and the first, you know, broad point we know about, then I talked about there's early childhood and I, and there's a, I haven't ever seen a contract. We talked about the United We Smile and actually voted for it, and I don't see it in the budget anywhere. Or, and I believe it was $36,000 or $3,000 a month. But I don't know that, that we've ever had a contract from them or sent one out. Yeah, so I mean, we, it's, I don't see it in the budget here anywhere.
Are you talking about the 2025 or 2026 budget?
For the 2026.
We didn't ever approve anything for United We Smile in 2026 and haven't had a request or nothing.
Well, I mean, I haven't seen it for 25 either, so. So I don't know what's happening with that. I, you know, and I also looked at the budget here. I noticed that in this M.I.E.I. campaigns, they got five times 1,000 to 6,000. So, you know, they're $1,000 off on their budget in the early childhood. And then they doubled up on the indirect rates. They've got one for 56,000 and another one for 25,000. So I'm just, I'm looking at their, their budget that they presented to us when they were here from the health department. So I mean, I'm just wondering what we're going to put into our 26 budget for, for that. I mean, and then we talked about the vouchers.
Approve the millage rate so we know what that number is.
We know what the amount is. I'm just saying, but they presented a budget to us. You know, that's what, yeah, we, you know, we want to pay that budget, but we put it into our budget. What they want us to pay, I, I would think.
Right.
You know, so, so I'm just saying that, I mean, I, I don't know if they talk about, they're only going to get to the vouchers till August, so I would think we would put 200,000 in there for that.
Might not have to.
You know, we could put 100,000 in for that and then the number would be, just one, it would be 770,000 instead of 700,000 or 771,000. Just because of, and I don't know what, well, the indirect rate, one and, number one and number one.
I don't get what you're saying because if we collect that millage money, it's not ours.
Yes, it is.
Goes into a fund, but.
No, it goes into our temple fund and then we pay them when they build us.
Okay, but we can't use it for anything else. You keep referring to it as ours and I don't see it as ours.
It's our responsibility.
It's our responsibility to manage.
Yeah, but on the.
Let, let Mr. Money finish it.
Are you done? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying that to put into the budget, I, I think we, you know, we should have it at around 890,000.
Well, if what they actually, I don't know what you're looking at directly there, but they included a budget. What they did is they took, they originally presented a budget to us that was somewhere around 900,000.
935,000.
Right, and then they took, they took that budget and reduced it to the budget I think you're looking at right now.
Exactly, that's the one that she presented.
And, right, and then, and then the proposal was that having reduced the budget to that amount, they could add the vouchers in, but that's your decision, not their, that, not their recommendation. So we would, we would form the budget around those figures for operational and then add $200,000 for vouchers is what the plan was.
Okay, well, that's, that's good. I was saying 100,000 because they're not going to get to it till August for 2026. So that, I would just.
We can do it that way too.
Yeah, just so we have a number that we know for early childhood, you know, and, and we know what we're going to be budgeting for it. And I was just curious about the, the extra 25,000 for indirect costs that, that, you know, I don't know why they would have that twice.
We could, we could definitely bet that internally and, and, but, but I think if you're, if you're okay with, with the idea that was presented, if those numbers don't work out exactly, we can, we can bet that internally and make it the number correct and then add the, let's say.
That's all I'm trying to do is have, we go with this now because it's, it says up here 935,000.
Right.
So then I just want to go with the numbers that she presented us.
It comes, it does come out to be roughly the same amount.
Right, if you go with the 200,000 for vouchers. Okay, so. But I guess she wanted, I, I felt she was asking, are we going to do for the vouchers? Is that going to be approved in the budget? And is this budget going to be approved?
Right, and if, and if it is, if, if you're okay with what was presented, again, if we have your consensus to proceed, we'll, we'll include that in the, in the budget that's presented to you at the end of the month and you're going to improve in the future.
That, that's what I'm getting at because that's the second thing on our list here.
Right. And we were, what we were hoping to do, and I was going to let Kathy, for the most part, lead us through this. We, we've, we've looked at it internally. There are some things that we definitely as an administration want to say no to. Some things we have either already built into the budget or want to recommend to you and some will just leave up to you for your discretion. Would that be a fair statement? And we'll just have, have Kathy lead you through most of those. I'm going to talk primarily about the, uh, questions about the personnel staffing section that's on the third page, but otherwise Kathy's going to deal with the rest of it.
I just have something related to childcare and, and take care of the Smile. Two things happened since, since we received that presentation. And one is we've put more emphasis on the child, early child voucher programs. And the other thing is that the Smile organization received a $2.9 million grant from the state of Michigan. So it may be something before we continue with that, that we revisit it.
We weren't proposing to, to add any of that into 2026 budget. We haven't had a request for that.
As I recall, we approved it as a board.
2000, for 2025.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
We didn't, we didn't, we're not anticipating anything for 2026. I mean, they may come in requests that we do so, but you would, we're not anticipating improving that in the.
I thought we approved it by the month. That's why I.
Right.
Get it up. So we approved it, I said, you have to look at the most, approved it at $3,000 a month.
But we couldn't, you couldn't have approved it as part of your 2026 budget.
Yeah, I understand that.
I have not received any bills and I have not made any payments. I don't have a contract. I have nothing.
Right, okay.
Well, that, that's what my, my question was, are we putting it in the 26 budget? But I don't see it and I haven't.
We're not, we're not anticipating, okay.
All right, Kathy.
Okay, and if I could just go back up a little bit on early childhood, it is its own fund. It's fund number 280. So when revenue is realized, it is deposited into fund 280. It does not filter through the general fund. Just wanted to clarify. Okay, so, um, starting at the top, we know that point broadband will be handled in 2025. We know that early childhood will do as administrator indicated. The medical examiner contract, we don't have the rates yet for 2026. They usually come in. When they do, we'll plug those into the budget. I would not imagine that's going to be a significant increase.
I, I talked to the Grand Traverse County Administrator. They are in the process of working out that, if you recall, they did, they changed, they did an RFP and they're eliminating their internal department. So it's going to be all handled by Western Michigan University. And Nate indicated to me that he didn't think that our allocation would be any more significant, wouldn't be significant or maybe even less than our allocation in 2025. We think we could be pretty flat on that.
Soil conservation, Jim has been meeting with them. I'm just going to roll it unless there's an indication otherwise.
Right, the, the main issue there is, is, is not the $52,000 invoice for services. It's that with the portion that they do for the soil erosion and sedimentation control permits that they, that's the, that's a good portion of what they do for us. They do that at no cost other than the retention of the funds that they get from the permits. And they have determined that that is, that the amount that they get, the fees that they get, do not pay for the, the cost of providing the service. And they are going to present to us a proposal for the increase of those fees. But that will be part of your, I mean, to the extent that it's part of your budget, it's, it's good practice to improve your fee schedule at least before 2020, before January 1st of 2026, and if possible, as part of your budget. So the, the cost won't increase the budget, but you may have to increase the fees that are charged in order to, in order to provide, for them to provide the service. If you don't want to increase the fees, you may have to increase the amount of the payment made to them. So it's, it's revenue neutral or budget neutral for them. Otherwise, they're just subsidizing your county. Otherwise, they're just subsidizing your county, that county function that, that we are obligated by statute to provide.
The next item, CPR first aid training for employees. This is where you'll make a decision if it's important enough to do this for the employees, provide this, whether you get grant funding or not. And if it's, we only want to do it if we get grant funding, then that's one answer, or we want to do it regardless.
It's only five thousand dollars.
I say correct. Well, what we, what we would propose is to put it in the budget with, with a corresponding amount for grant funding as revenue, and if we don't get a grant, then the question will be whether there are other funds that could be used that are, are, are budgeted but unallocated for that, for that purpose. We come to you.
It would be good to go for two percent funding for that.
And we probably will do that.
I think it's in this round.
It is, it is, and it's also something that could potentially, potentially be MMRMA grant as well.
So yes, let's do it whether we get grant funding or not.
Yes, but we will balance it up with a, with, with, with a grant. Grant revenue, just in case, so we can, we are encouraged to pursue it. All right, that's from that, yeah.
Sort of. I don't.
You don't put that in answer.
You're going to put that in.
There's an answer on that.
You're going to put that in the gaming fund, then? I'm just, I'm sorry, I do have a question. Um, the gaming fund is a separate fund, so is that the fund that you'd like that administered?
We'll, we'll make a decision on that when we present it at the budget in November. It'll be a revenue, there'll be a revenue side and an expense side for that. It probably will be general fund, grant revenue. What does that mean? We're going to pay for it whether we get a grant or not?
I think we should, but I think we should try to get a grant. But it's really important to train, keep people trained on that.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm. I, I'd say we all get grant and all, but what is other? What's the consensus?
I think it's very important to make sure people are trained.
I think we're silly not to have people trained, use these, the elderly population that comes through this building. All the stress and get out of these meetings, I can deal with. It's silly not.
I want you trained.
All right, so.
Okay.
I've been calling up W before, so you should just train.
I did, at Administrator's request, I did look back twenty years on veterans' burial. In the last twenty years, the county has provided a hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars toward veterans' internment over twenty years period. We have rolled the budget every year of ten thousand eight hundred. Coincidentally, that was the first year, two thousand five, ten thousand eight hundred dollars. So as the years have progressed, the veterans' burial, the amount of internments has decreased as our population ages. And we probably don't have to fund this line item at ten thousand eight hundred if you wanted to move it down to four thousand or five hundred, or five thousand. And also consider increasing the internment from a three hundred dollar stipend to, I believe Administrator recommended five hundred.
That's our, that's our recommendation. Increase the, decrease the budgeted amount to, I would say, what you'd say on average, we have five burials.
Well, maybe four.
And, and, and have that budget, let's say, set that budget at three thousand and, and increase the stipend from three to five.
I would support that.
Isn't that? All right.
Okay.
Not getting any no's, so go for it.
Okay. Um, this is, I know we are thinking of looking at evaluating our current purchase program versus leasing on copiers. But at the current, uh, rate that we are replacing copiers and the current policy or program that we are just routinely turning over two to three copiers a year, we would like to increase the per copy charge until we make another determination from four and eight cents, that's black and white in color, to five and ten, just so that the Duke Fund has a bit more money to pay for these expensive copiers, should we continue to go down that line.
That's, that's the recommendation of the church.
Where's the end budget? Where's that end up?
Uh, that is, actually, that is in the Duke Fund, which is fund six, four, five. And, um, I'd have to look at that a little more closely to see if we, I think I budgeted for two copiers, two copy machines in twenty-six to purchase, but we need the revenue to come in from the use of all the other copiers to pay for those two machines. Okay. Moving on, you did talk about new monitors in possibly twenty-five. I'm not even considering that. That's a decision you all will make. You were talking about monitors on the floor here versus something on your desks.
We also looked at that. Process that would put monitors on the desk and also can, you know, have you the ability to entrance and exit into the meeting as, as, and so, so. So it would actually make it much easier for you to log in. And we don't have any idea what that's going to cost, but, uh, but we are going to have a demonstration of that sometime. The vendor promised to get in touch with us before the end of the year. I think a couple of you actually saw the, saw the doctor, the process that we use. So we, yeah, it probably would be prudent to just, if you want us to pursue that, but, uh, but not put a dollar above it. We'd probably fund that out of, eventually out of contingency, I would think, Kathy.
Yeah, if it was a twenty-five item, I felt like there was some urgency, but we also talked to IT and there's some logistics.
Practically, we probably won't get it done and contracted, particularly if you want us to do RFPs before the end of the year, so it would be a twenty twenty-six item. So I would just say pursue it, but fund it through contingency.
And not just for our table here, but for our audience as well. We need to improve that.
Okay. Then we've already discussed the patrol cars that we're going to just budget status quo pending more evaluation, so we're going to continue with that. Um, given the fact that we're unsure, I would like to increase the per mile charge so we have more revenue going to the vehicle fund. If we, we can always, you know, it'll stop if we go with enterprise or continue on some of the fleet and not on the whole fleet, whatever you decide. But if I could go to fifty cents and seventy-five cents, and that's on the first eighty thousand miles, and this, and then anything over eighty thousand, that would put more money into the vehicle fund. Just, okay? I'm getting nods, yes?
Yep.
Then we have the sheriff's duty weapon platform ammunition. Oh, go ahead.
You did skip the building safety Tacoma.
Oh, okay, building safety Tacoma. That would be purchased in the building safety fund with their fund balance or their budget.
So I'd recommend that, and again, we're about to explore other.
Yeah. Wrap that in.
Purchase or lease is appropriate, but it will be included in the budget that the police has, has presented.
Is it, would that add to the number of cars within the bill?
No.
Oh.
No.
Uh, I think she's going to sell a Ranger.
Right, that was, that was the plan.
And, uh, you're correct, reassignment of the former TNT car to the Marine Division, the black pickup truck.
Back to Tacoma, I believe that she's going to take the one car and set it aside for a, um, back home.
I think you're right.
So, yeah, I don't think that.
It will increase the number of vehicles you're going to buy.
So we'll, we'll increase a little bit.
Okay.
Why Tacoma? Why not take bids from other car dealers?
I met with her today. She had picked this one just to get on the schedule, but she said she'll go out for bids. She'll look at anything you want her to look at.
We're basically really just allocating fifty thousand dollars for the purchase or lease.
Sure.
And it'll be whatever, you know, whatever we decide.
My, my suggestion is to take the normal, the word Tacoma.
I can do that.
And, and it would, that wouldn't reflect in the budget anyways.
Right.
It just, the dollar amount would be reflected. They do, they do indicate they have a preference for those in terms of how they function, but that's.
And then reassignment of the surplus, of a surplus vehicle patrol car to EMS, changing out lights or the light configuration slightly different and keeping the radio equipment intact so the car has, before they just, you know, take everything out of it, he'd like to have some of the equipment, so that would be a reassignment. And then he would have a Crown Vic to sell.
For emergency management.
Yeah, is that it? Yeah.
Yes.
That's right. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, thank you. We'll, we'll finish with motor pool vehicles and go on to LEC EMS equipment, law enforcement center, emergency management service equipment. And we need to address the sheriff's proposal for a new duty weapon platform and accessories and ammunition.
It was our recommendation that if you consider that or if you wish to consider that, we essentially fund that with the savings on the, on the, the, the salary side. Since that's going to be one year only for certain.
Right.
You would consider that as a possibility if you thought that. Obviously, it would be those dollar amounts would be transferred to a capital line item rather than, rather than salary line item. Administration would be content with that if you were.
Support for that?
Yes.
All right.
That's something we need.
Can I just ask for clarification, Kathy? This is already budgeted, though, right?
No.
So the eighteen thousand dollars.
We're two, we're up two lines.
Two lines above that.
Sheriff duty weapon platform.
So this is a new nine-seventy?
Yes, in the sheriff's budget. Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
So, I'm not sure I heard. I, I'm good with that. I heard, I heard a verbal yes, but I didn't catch nods.
I didn't see any no's, so.
Okay. And then I've already built into the budget the capital outlay for fast radar units, breathalyzers, and the capital outlay for the jail. Um, it's the same dollar amount year to year, and they seem to purchase the same thing, so we rolled it. Nodding. Uh, the console, that's already underway for twenty-five, so we're not going to discuss that. We do have to discuss the communications project, which is the NICE recorder, five years maintenance plan with WSI, and the ARC GIS Pro upgrade, which Matt and Sorgi came to talk to you about. And, um, this is something that I think there's also partnership with equalization to assist with the GIS.
And that's really a.
I'm getting, yes.
Yes, all right.
And what time is that one?
Um, that one, I would need some assistance with that because of the crossover between two departments with equalization participating.
Right. Yeah, we, we figure out what comes and how we include it in, in the budget presented.
Is that nine-one-one or emergency management?
It's.
Well, it's nine-one plus, plus equalization or share.
So it's general fund and nine-one-one.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Then the communications capital project, the new radio system, which would be a probably more than likely a lease purchase like the one we had before, and I think Chairman Yoder, you sit on that as well as Administrator Dyer. I'm sorry, and Mr. Bunnick or Commissioner Bunnick.
Right, I, I think that we're going to have to start setting some money aside for that. I mean, because it looks like we're leasing a lot of dollars. Right, and so I would, I would say that, you know, we put two hundred thousand or something in capital improvement. You know, we got to start, you know, because in the world, those other radios who are, put them on a ten-year payoff, they really only have seven-year life. So we have to prepare better than we did last time.
Yeah, technically, we don't have to have money set aside for twenty twenty-seven, but I think to your point, we should start budgeting for that because that's some money that needs to be set aside.
Yeah, we, we make the debt, or the lease payment once a year, and we gather that from different pockets of money and, and I think we got radio income from all the townships or all the fire departments as well.
Yeah, that's, that's, the bottom line is that's going to be a financially complicated transaction, I would say. And we are, we're not prepared to, at this time, to recommend a budget amount of twenty twenty-six, particularly if we're only going to the base on twenty twenty-seven. Yeah, we, we should be putting some money aside.
And I've maybe two hundred thousands too much, but that's, that's what I was thinking that we should try to do.
I would, I, I would not disagree.
Is the, the way now is not a one-time cost of figuring out lease stuff?
It's that, it would be, it would be the capital cost. How we acquire it, whether we, you know,
Right.
Probably won't be in a position to be cash under any circumstances, but, but it could either be bonded, it could be a, a, an asset purchase agreement. I suggest to do, counties are permitted to do that.
I'm just thinking seven, if you go seven years at a hundred and fifty or a hundred and eighty thousand, but you don't even need to begin that until the twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
If, if we, if we lease it, which is sound, I mean, I think we're going to have to lease it.
Lease purchase. It's a lease purchase.
Yeah.
More than likely.
Yeah.
What I would, what, what probably would be the best thing to do is, is to throw some money into contingency with the idea that it, that it's going to need to be rolled over to twenty twenty-seven. That's about the best thing you can do, I think, this year.
When is the final payment for the LEC?
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, so they might.
It might be.
Crossing paths at just the right time.
Might be.
LEC.
The, of course, law enforcement are, on our bonds.
Twenty-seven, we're still.
I think it's next year, isn't that four hundred?
Chen, is it twenty-seven or twenty-six?
Twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-seven.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Mr. Russell. Yeah, and I'm sure there wouldn't be a total agreement at this table now, but at some point we could consider nine-one-one with surcharge to cover, I mean, that's a lot of money, and the radios and the tower stuff we're doing, we're spending a lot of money in, in nine-one-one and dispatch. And we'd have to go out for voter approval because we're the max without voter approval. And, but the surcharge is a fair way to fund emergency services.
I'm telling you exactly how another county, which I'm familiar with, but again, hey, did exactly that, and we were able to pass a public safety village. But the, the, the way we did that is we indicated to the, the fire chiefs of all the jurisdictions that we would fund that a hundred percent out of that, out of that public safety village every, you know, every year. But in exchange, they had to go out and sell it to their communities, and they did, passed overwhelmingly. And would be able to, you know, you could, you could fund that all in, in one year, frankly, with a half a percent. Well, yeah, half a percent, no. Quarter of a percent. Quarter of a mil, you funded one year with the tenth of that, you funded over ten.
Didn't we have that on the ballot once?
Yes, it failed.
And it failed.
And, and it failed the first time in that other county as well, but, but we didn't make the promise to fund the radios and the fire chiefs, promising in turn to sell it to their communities, like I said, which they did. That is one way, that is definitely one way.
Let me just, let's say, are you talking about trying to combine all of our fire departments?
No, no.
But it was, we just worked this.
Radio. What we agreed to do.
No.
We, what we agreed to do, we would buy the radio, provide it to them at no cost. No cost to them. It had nothing to do with consolidating the departments or anything like that. It had nothing to do with consolidating the departments or anything like that. It simply, the, the, the county acquired those, it was actually the disco authority, acquired those radios for contract with Motorola and then distributed them at no cost to the, the fire departments. And in exchange, they, they, they convinced their, their voters that it was a good thing for them.
But the, I believe the last time we actually purchased them and Motorola gave us ten years to pay them off. You know, without telling us that it would last seven years.
That's it.
So, so that, that was how we did it, funded through the, uh,
Or overly large.
The property, it was.
DTR.
Yeah.
Very first few payments were DTR.
Were DTR, but we also got some money from, you know, the sharing with the, with the.
The general fund.
General fund. We, we, and we charged the, each fire department a, a, a small rental fee for each radio that they received. You know, but we had the majority of them, so we were paying ourselves for that rental fee.
But all, the other thing I think.
That's how it was all.
The other thing that's important to remember is it's not so much that the radios became obsolete. They still work for ten years and we could have, they still do, or the problem is there's a, there's a, an external requirement, maybe they, they have, um, security, encrypted security. And that's why they become obsolete if you will. Motorola didn't, didn't screw us on that deal, basically. It, we could have used them for ten years. It's just, they need that additional encryption.
So what's the consensus here, set money aside or wait till twenty-twenty-seven?
I would say if we have the money, set it aside.
I, I think we, we need to do it, we need to start, start planning for it. Because we know it's going to come up.
Where, where are you going to come from?
Capital.
How about we could, we could do this to indicate that, you know, we defer that as a budget item until twenty-twenty-seven, but make a recommendation to you for, for a portion of our fund balance or a portion of our contingency or something like that, be restricted for use for the radio. Up to two hundred thousand dollars. Make recommendations on that, how that is restricted.
Add it to our contingency, you know.
Yeah, and then, but, but, but have it restricted to that.
Yeah, I am.
Sure.
We can do that.
I, I think if you, so you're going to make an option to use it or if you're dedicating it, then why put it in contingency? I mean, contingency means for something you're not planning for. So I, myself, I, I think that, that, that the overlapping timelines between the LEC bond ending and our need to fund this just might play together. And, and I, I just, it's, we haven't even been through this list, I don't know if anyone's adding everything up, but you can't put, you can't put a lot of money. I mean, I think last meeting, we talked about three hundred thousand dollars, we might have. I wouldn't want this to be so far in that other things that we look at here that, that we can't put off, don't get it. That's, we're worried.
I, I, I wouldn't necessarily say we would, that's, we'd have to put it, put it in a restricted account of some form that we know can be rolled over to twenty-twenty-seven. That's what, that's what you recommend.
I think two hundred thousands.
We'd go a hundred and fifty.
Okay.
You're easy.
We got a hundred, sure. I just want us to start saving towards, you know, even if it's a hundred thousand, if that's what we can afford. But we need to be aware that we've got to do it.
Yes. Support on the board to do that.
Yes.
And see that.
Oh, the last item on this list is the government tower deconstruction. Uh, we've identified that we possibly would look at the tower fund, but the dollar amount is phased.
Yeah, and we, we would want, we would ask that for a final decision and implementation in twenty-twenty-seven. I'm really prepared to make a recommendation.
You're saying we can't do, move the tower to twenty-twenty-seven?
I'm not saying we can't, I'm saying we're not in a position, we don't think we're in a position to make a decision on that. We don't have enough data to say what it, you know, whether we can do it.
I thought he says it was eighty thousand and there was enough money in the, the tower fund to do it.
Well, we don't think there's enough money, number one, and we're not, we're not convinced that eighty thousand dollars is what we're saying. Maybe, it may be, we actually had a tower that I'm familiar with in another jurisdiction that I worked in. We thought we were going to be able to get it removed by a salvage operator. And we had an estimate from an engineer that was almost next to nothing. When it finally got down to deciding to take it down, it was like five times that what the engineer said it was going to cost. And how much we could get. That was a completely different type of tower too, so it's not apples to apples.
Move towards it, yes.
We don't know if eighty thousand dollars is a, is a, is a good number.
And when we.
We take it down or not, I hope we can transfer the equipment.
Yeah, we, that's, that's planned regardless of where I take it down.
Because that, that's, we've had a lot of feedback.
Then in furniture and fixtures, we're going to take this kind of as a lump group. Administrator, do you want to say what's going to be removed?
Yeah, we, we, we collectively don't believe the lunchroom version is appropriate at this time. We don't have, we don't have a sense that, that that's, that's preferred by, by the, by the staff. But all the other things, which are basically changes, the, the changes that were requested by building and grounds in, in their airspace, that we approve all of those and put them together as a project funded through the four-seventy, uh, account rather than through their budget because if it goes into their budget, it ends up crossed out to all of the departments. And we don't think that that's.
But we're not doing the, any, or the, extra intro.
We're going to delete that from, from the list, but all the others, we're recommending that, we're recommending that we approve and fund through, uh, four-seven capital.
The only two that I thought really would be the, the cruise lockers and then the bookshelves. I thought all the rest really weren't absolutely necessary or had to be, to be included, but you know, that was, that was what I looked at, and I, those were the only two items I put yesterday.
You know what? We haven't spent any money on that office down there in, what, forty years?
We spent over five thousand dollars in it this last year since I've been here.
But nothing has happened in forty years.
No, it's not forty years.
I don't know.
Oh, well, there, there is that back.
Take yourself away.
But, but Jerry never did, Jerry, Jerry did. He's pretty much starting from scratch down there. This is, I don't think this is real significant.
Let's contest them on the board.
Fifty months of organizing.
Now, now, everybody else?
I, I took, uh, Patrick's table and chairs off because I thought we, we just had some excess chairs. But we, we were trying to figure out what to do with them. I don't think in our, in our, in our building and grounds office, we need to purchase new chairs. Let's refurbish some of the ones that we have in storage probably down there.
Do we have some chairs in there?
I know you got rid of all of them.
I don't think we did.
Yeah, do we?
I think they gave them away.
Yeah.
Yeah, they gave them away.
Yeah, I thought they were all in the hallway there to get away.
They're all gone.
Okay. All right, so.
Okay. Next page, department projects. Um, much of this is, um, handled pretty much register of deeds. She made a presentation to you, um, on her mapping project and that's in a fund two-five-six. So you heard from the register of deeds on that.
And we'd like to, we'd like to move that forward and include it in the budget as she has suggested.
And then, uh, equalization will take on the mapping fund. That was originally for many, many years handled under planning. Planning doesn't do mapping anymore, it's all done in equalization. And we agree that this will be under Andrew's leadership going forward.
Paul?
Uh, that budget is where they do the aerial every five years, the thirty-some thousand. And this is where the revenue for map sales goes into the mapping fund. So every five years, you're going to see an aerial rotation of maps.
Is twenty-twenty-six one of the golden years where we have to.
I think we're in it now. Uh, we're doing it now. I think Andrew came to you this year and told you that they're doing aerial mapping right now.
It's already, we're not budgeted twenty-six.
No, it's.
We're just telling you that that.
Reallocated.
It's going to be reallocated.
That Andrew will be taking the lead on that. Um, and then when Andrew made his presentation, his scanner, it, and he underspends his office supplies. We just recommended he spend it out of that line item, no increase, no decrease, just take it there. Historical record preservation, the clerk, this is rolling forward. She mentioned that last week, so this is something that's been rolled forward. Recycle, this is also a roll forward. Um, there's a line item for capital outlay to investigate cameras, lighting, electricity at recycle sites. It's something, it's kind of an ongoing conversation. I don't think there's any directive, but the recycle, um, solid waste council talks about this and they'll come to you if they have a recommendation. This is funded by the recycle fee.
The limiting factor is that most of the recycling sites, regardless of what we do with cameras, most of them don't have electrical at the facility that we can plug into.
Over Wi-Fi.
Whether we want our Wi-Fi, so whether we want it or not, it's probably impractical for us to do. So we're, we're content to roll it forward on the fat, on the chance that we might be able to figure something out. There's a, there's a, there's a battery operated function we could, we could use, but, um, maybe a lost cause.
And, uh, Lena Vandermillan at the senior services presentation talked to you about developing a produce, um, program mimicking Benzi and Grand Traverse County for food, farmer food coupons, so that it's a little user friendlier for seniors, so they don't have to rely on the internet or their cell phones or QR codes and, and she would model it after the other two counties, so that.
Within her, within her budget.
Yes. Then just an awareness about the drain commissioner's budget. And we may have Jim speak to this, that as these drains are coming to fruition, that the engineering costs do run through the general fund. I am tracking those since inception, so we know how much the general fund has fronted when those drains are going to be constructed and, um, the debt is secured either through a bond or, or lending agency, whatever comes about, that the general fund will be paid back for all the fronted. Then we will make our contribution as applicable for the drain being the at-large contributor. Then the part that we pay for the road commission, if applicable, we get fifty percent back because we have a working relationship with the road commission.
We think for all of those, they'll end up being a debt amount that we need to pay over and above those dollars that we've already paid towards. So it'll reduce and not completely eliminate the, the at-large portion of the drain construction that we're required to pay. But, so I don't want you to think we'll be getting money back, but we'll just be paying less in the future based upon what we paid. We intend to roll those or do budget amendments as necessary.
Yeah, and you'll see those tonight. When you look at your budget amendments, you'll see a budget amendment for the drain commissioner tonight in the general fund.
Can I ask, have an idea on our liability for two thousand twenty-six that should, let's take a number in there?
Well, it depends on the engineering bills that come in on these drains. It's, it's a number that I, I'm not going to be able to forecast.
And we really don't. We've, we've, we've tried to do that, have not come up with a good way of doing, you know, predicting that future.
I'm just, I'm not very comfortable leaving it at zero.
And we do, we start with zero because we just don't know. But these drains, from what I understand, are going to be constructed in twenty-twenty-six is the goal. Some in the spring, some in the summer, fall. That's the goal.
Is Ken going to be here tonight then?
He, um, he asked me, I said, his, his issues were on the consent agenda. So I said, I didn't see a reason, but maybe I misspoke.
We really don't have a choice.
I know we don't have a choice, but we do have a choice now. We're going to budget it. And, and I really think it falls on the drain commissioner to give us some wild guess. So there's a placeholder there anyways.
I, I wouldn't disagree, we could do that and include it, include it in the budget. And it'd be basically the, the, uh, yeah, we could, we could, we could do that.
We can look at what we spent so far.
You know, it's going to, they're all going to be, it's all going to be a six-figure, so.
Yeah. Didn't we just put thirty thousand in there?
That's strangely.
That was for the maintenance fund.
That's, that's our main, that's our only main drain, it's not, not the construction.
Is that, would that have to be a separate fund or would you make it a hundred and thirty thousand?
Well, it's.
Well, it's constructed. The way. At the time the drains were approved, it might have been prudent to, to, to fund them in, in that, the fund that we just created and then make those payments out of that fund. That would have been permitted, but we haven't done that in the past. So we're kind of down the road and so close to the completion of the drain that we're going to have to make the at-large payment that it kind of doesn't make sense to that, fill all of that and do it all again. We could probably take an amount that would, and maybe we could take the difference between the estimated, the estimated cost of, uh, of construction and what we've expended so far. We could possibly do that. We can, we'll, we'll figure out a number to put into the, into the budget that it's, doesn't start at zero.
Okay.
We'll make a recommendation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, uh, moving into building and grounds projects, your chill tower is budgeted as a transfer from DTR to capital projects in twenty-five. We will reconstruct that in twenty-six. I don't think we're going to get underway, so it is not in the DTR transfer right now. I just talked to the treasurer this morning, we know where we're at. So it's within the five sixteen fund.
Started that, we've been talking.
Our RFPs are out with, uh, for engineering drawings.
Right, right. And we're getting, we're getting some response to that. In fact, well, I got a question, very good question, is whether we would consider a geothermal solution. And the response that we're going to give to that is, yes, we'll consider it. But you have to give us, uh, if, if you're going to propose that, you have to give us, uh, an estimate of what it might, uh, where it would be and where and how it might disrupt, disrupt our operations at all. Because that would be a much different. The way we're thinking it, we're going to get is basically something that we just crane what's there out and crane what's going to be replaced in and connected. It wouldn't disrupt our operations, but if you're going to dig, dig a hole and, and, and wells for geothermal, which could be very, could be very much a cost savings for us to do that. We, Calvin County, we went to geothermal and our, and our county building saves a ton on it. Really, you know, on our, on our utility, that's very often. There are also, there are also energy tax credits that I think may still be available.
So what happened above the Veronica Valley DNR, is that just gone?
Yeah, no, we skipped that.
Yeah, sorry, DNR, that grant is still outstanding. We don't know the, um, outcome of that, but should it come back, they match, I believe it is fifty thousand. And that is sitting in fund four-seventy now in cash. There's actually a hundred and ten thousand sitting there.
This year will be rolled over next year.
Right.
Prepare for that.
So back to buildings and grounds, the wastewater treatment system upgrade and the study. So back to buildings and grounds, the wastewater treatment system upgrade and the study. Jim, do you want to talk about that?
We would, we would recommend that you at least fund the study of that system this year. And, and probably if we determine that we're gonna do it, we would pay the sixty, the estimated sixty thousand out of the contingency. But we want to at least, at least fund the study.
So this, did you say this year, Jim, you want that's, oh, so twenty five?
No, 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 no.
It's twenty twenty seven.
Twenty twenty six.
Sixty two thousand off, right?
Correct. We would, yeah, unless, unless the study recommends it, then, and sixty two thousand is appropriate. We fund it through contingency, but not for the end.
So, and would that be a contingency transfer from DTR?
Well, I mean, we talked this afternoon about, we might be funding, we might be funding, we might have some general fund money flow to, you know, four seven, so.
Okay.
Is there a known problem or we're trying to stay ahead of this? I, I don't know that detail, but I do know it's been recommended for several years.
No, it's over twenty years old.
Yeah.
Are you sure it's not forty years old?
I'm sure you're twenty nine. Forty, with a couple of gallons.
And we're gonna move the trailer mount generator to twenty seven. And in speaking with the treasurer's office this morning, put another hundred and fifty thousand in twenty six from DTR to four seventy for heat pump replacements. We are doing that systematically and we move a hundred and fifty at a time. Okay? Now into the IT realm here, the, anything that we are going to decide in this area filters back through cost allocation to the general fund. So this, these decisions will be impactful to the general fund as well. Okay? So buildings and grounds and IT, they were looking at four iPads, vehicle mounts and one laptop for buildings and grounds.
What are the vehicle mounts for iPads?
I think that that is something to go in so that the, they're, they're, they have cell phones. And if they get the iPads, that they're, they're mounted on the dashboard.
Building around to have four trucks, four vehicles?
They have three.
Why would you mount an iPad?
Because he wants wifi at the parks, which we're not doing. So he doesn't need iPads. So I said no to it.
Why do they need to mount them?
Well, I guess whatever. So they don't have to hold.
I guess without a kit. Oh, it's not around the bank. Some damage, so.
You can't look at it unless you're parked, so. I have a good amount right here.
Yeah, you too. Because they're silent electronically, that's, that's the idea.
Don't they have phones?
I get it, give them iPads, but why do they need to be mounted? That's the question. Yeah.
Well. What's your consensus on that? Get some direction.
Give them iPads, but don't mount them.
I don't know why they need iPads.
Well, actually, they can do everything that they, on their smartphone, they would do an iPad. You know, and we get the hot sauce things, you know. Where I work here, it's a system you get that is a. So consensus is I'm getting this. Hot sauce is the.
I guess I'd like to hear why.
It's the, well, hot sauce system. So then. Consensus was the biggest argument.
Okay, yep.
iPads and mounts is a no?
iPads and mounts is a no.
Thank you.
Laptop for probably the director of buildings and grounds. That'd probably be to work from home.
Shouldn't that be come through IT?
It is. It will. But it is specifically for buildings.
Have they, do they recommend this or it's just a request?
It was a request by buildings and grounds, but it does have to run through IT.
I, I don't know why we wouldn't give them.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, two cellphone boosters. This, I'm not sure what this is.
That's for the two parts, I believe. The idea is because there's no wifi there, they boost signal with cell phones and, and actually use their, their, their cell phones, you know, that's two and not three.
I was just gonna say that wifi, I said. Maybe, maybe it's Miles and, and the other two, neither Veronica he doesn't or something.
Veronica, yeah.
That's what I would do.
Yeah.
I bought a booster for like two hundred and fifty dollars.
These ones are more like two thousand dollars.
Consensus to go with that?
Yeah, I guess that's what they.
Well, this is just for their personal, I mean, that's just, I'm not sure where, where this goes. Is this, is this something they're dropping that they carry around or? Okay, where? The booster is usually replaced in the, in the location. What, you don't. Basically what it does is it captures whatever signal is available, makes it useful.
Right, but it's gonna be permanently fixed somewhere.
I believe so. That's how generally they're used.
So if there's no wifi at those parks, I don't see why we wouldn't okay having a booster. So they can access, especially if they're getting workers that.
Would a visit, visitor benefit visitors to the park too? I don't think so. I don't know. It might, probably would actually, because I don't think. I don't think so. My guess is that Veronica Valley, they're gonna put it in their building there. And so it isn't gonna help elsewhere. I don't know that for sure, but it's gotta be water. As long as you can connect to the, connect to the booster, and anybody who connects.
No.
Could we, could we put this on to maybe consideration with a little more information?
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay. The next item, super grak is going to be taken off the list, correct?
We, we don't recommend that. Administration does not recommend that at this point. To the extent we're going to start using artificial intelligence, we're going to have that vetted through IT as to what service we use. And it'll be subject to a countywide policy. We're not prepared to do that or authorize any department to use it independently that way. All right.
And you put that in there. We turned down super grak.
Okay. And then tonight, I believe you are going to be hearing about the RFP process for the replacement for safety net. I have it in the budget for a hundred and fifty thousand, so we'll adjust to whatever you decide tonight.
We're recommending, we're recommending a, a provider that is within that amount. We'd like the budget amount to stay the same because there might be a few additions here or there. When we do the, when we do the install, it wasn't anticipated bid. So you think fifty on one fifty is still good? That was what was budgeted last year for safety net thrive. Keep that same. All right, good.
Okay, thirty workstations to be replaced is in the budget. This is typical of this department. Then she has a request for Adobe Acrobat and Acrobat Professional License Subscription for nine thousand. This is not in the budget. I just need to have yeses or nos. I have a yes from commissioner.
Can't get any done, you don't have it.
Okay. The next item, Quest Rapid Recovery, I think I brought this up to you before, that this is a renewal. It was, I just, just didn't pick it up. It was a renewal, so it's not a new request, so I'll put that in. Microsoft Office three sixty five, you, on your agenda tonight, I believe it's under consent. You're looking to start this project, so this is an annual renewal for this dollar amount roughly. Okay? And then the Safety Net MDR, we believe that this is built into the RFP above. Is that correct?
Yes, at least, they're gonna do it a little bit differently, but in fact, I, I think we prefer the solution that they're proposing. The vendor that we're recommending is very, very oriented towards cybersecurity. In fact, that's their, it's right in their name, you know, Carew Cyber is their, that's their focus. These guys are very impressive in terms of their, their abilities in that, in that realm. I just gotta call back. I wanted my employees from Branch County. It's very highly in terms of their abilities as well as their ability to obtain grant funding for some of the expenses that they incur.
And then due point, Jim, we spoke about this, that perhaps this would be a wait or, okay, so we're recommending that we wait on due point. And Civic Plus Software, I'll let Jim speak to that.
That's the Civic Plus is the agenda preparation software that I had talking about for several months. And we'd like to include that in, in.
Okay.
How many licenses are?
How much?
This board, yeah. It's a cloud-based system, so it, it has unlimited licenses.
Tell me, tell me what, I just don't understand what it does.
It, it automates the preparation of the agenda, which primarily right now, Lauren does it all by hand. It takes incredible, a lot of time, but more importantly, we don't, it doesn't route through a, a process for it to be properly reviewed by everybody that should have their eyes on it. And that's, that's the main thing that it does, routes it through a workflow to make sure that before it gets on the agenda, it's been reviewed by finance, reviewed by administration. If it involves a department, it's reviewed by the department. And, and, and the language in the EDS that's presented to you is, is, is both accurate and agreed to by everybody that's proposing it. More importantly, it gathers it all into a single packet. You'd end up getting a PDF with the pages all identified and, and collected into one document. And you get it published as soon as, as it's approved by everyone internally. And then you can also distribute it to anyone in the public that provides us with their, their email. They can get it instantaneously as soon as it's approved as well. So if you're, as a commissioner, wanted something on the agenda, how would we start that? Same, the same way that you do right now by, by contacting, contacting me and we work out, work a, work it through exactly the same process that we do right now. The only difference is it adds the workflow and the approval process. And we would, if, if it's something that you proposed, we could also route it to you through your emails. You could say, yeah, that's what I want. That's what I want. Now that's something we don't even do, unfortunately. As we as commissioners, could we watch the agenda being formed? I mean, can we log in and say, and see, okay, there's been this, and this, and there's been this? Yes, but you probably wouldn't, yes, you could, yes, you would have the, the right to do that, to see things as they're added and approved in the agenda. The other thing it tells you is at what stage, and what stage of the approval is it at? Yes, if it's right. Absolutely. Right, so is that, do you know with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and then at A point for Office three sixty five, I would assume that's part of the three sixty five process. So I think that, I'm not a techie, so I'm guessing we should put that in. And the Raymond Incident Response Plan Development.
We don't need that. That's gonna be part of the RFP.
Okay.
And that's one of the things that, that, that Carew Cyber does as part of their process. They create the, the incident response programs and have, and be approved. So that's exactly one of the reasons we selected that, so that can be, yes.
And then the jail access control, we're looking at Fund two eleven to pay for that, and it's kind of underway right now. It could happen this year.
It could, based upon information that I've received from the jail administrator and all likelihood, we're gonna need an RFP. So if we're asking that it be included in the twenty twenty six budget, it probably won't be done at the end of this year unless we waive RFP.
And that's Fund two eleven though. That's not general fund. And Parks and Rec on page three, the Miles Kimberly will be done in twenty five. I think that's on your agenda for tonight with the short disc golf. And the playground is being moved to twenty seven. Old Settlers is a repair and maintenance. It's a budget amendment tonight for you for twenty five. The Old Settlers replaced the stairs, I think that was. Decided, there's no recommendation on that.
No.
The Loop Trail is, again, we're mentioning your.
Can we go back? Can we stop and look at the, the stairs were a hundred and six thousand dollars? What's the status?
That, we don't have a, a recommendation from the Parks Recreation Commission on that. They have not made that.
So we put that on twenty twenty seven?
I think so.
I thought they had decided that we had the other gazebo there, so the ADA spirit question wasn't really the issue. What it is now is the roof and, I mean, general maintenance. And what's, what's cheap, we don't have to build the ramp, because we have a handicap accessible gazebo in that part.
I think part of that too was, was the question of whether we replace the stairs down to the.
Water.
Waterfront. And that, that we don't have a recommendation on, unfortunately, but you're right about the, about the gazebo stairs and all that. You're right about that.
So are we just talking about their budget?
Parks and Rec, yes.
So this is all stuff that's allowed in their budget?
If there, if it's a recommendation from Parks and Rec Commission to you and you approve it, then it's a done, it's a go.
That's how we handle, I mean, they, they, they initiate a review of projects and they approve it. But it ultimately is your decision as to whether those projects get approved. That's why you're seeing tonight, the disc golf and the, what's the other one?
Gazebo.
Gazebo, the gazebo repair on your, on your agenda tonight.
But what is their budget every year? Budget every year, I guess that's part of their budget.
But, but again, they don't control that much.
I know, but what is reality?
Well, a lot of these are capital improvements, so they're, they're one time.
And they will have a fifty five thousand dollar capital outlay rolled. They get this every year and there's, this year they're spending it on the golf and the repair to the gazebo and they bought a tractor and, you know, so they do.
The rest of these, the rest of these are their wish.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, I thought so.
So, and just kind of quickly going through the rest of this list. Again, we're mentioning the DNR grant for the Loop Trail. The parking lot pavement is being moved for Veronica Valley to twenty seven. The path to Pond, even though it was talked about, I don't think there's a recommendation. So we would just wait. It might be something they use their fifty five thousand dollars for. We don't know. Grant writer, I think that administrator was thinking something about that.
I, I, I don't, if we're going to do that, I don't anticipate approving through the Parks and Recreation Budget. That's something that we could do.
When it comes.
Yeah, through the, through the county budget. And, and as I've said, I, I'm not convinced that a grant writer is what we need. We need someone that can actually find grants that we actually qualify for instead of randomly selecting a grant that we really don't qualify for and then paying five thousand dollars to a grant writer to write an excellent grant that's gonna get turned down. That I don't want.
Although when I was in the county's association, I think it was, is it now? They have a grant, so I, I would like, I hope we will look into this. And the best way to do it, they said they had gotten $2 billion from the grant, in the grants, that the grant writer found.
Yes, and again, it's not so much the writing in the grant, it's the finding of the grant and vetting your own qualifications for it. That's a real hard job.
But it's worth doing.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's worth doing, but to be honest, if we're going to do this, I would much rather that we, that we either hire an employee, another employee to do it or contract for somebody that actually has the competence to do what I'm suggesting.
Yes.
Instead of, instead of just getting somebody that can pay $5,000 to, again, to write a grant that we pick that we really don't qualify for.
Well, let's look for, for a grant, a good grant writer, I was totally.
Well, potentially that should be relabeled then, you know, so there's not confusion.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I, if we're going to do it, I'd like to see it in the, in the, the Board of Commissioners budget and subject to, subject to the administrators of the Board.
Yes, if I could, I mean, we talked about it at, at the Park and Rec level, I don't know how this got to be 30,000. That, that is, that's a crazy number because you can't ever hit a match.
Right.
But I think.
Talking about six grants and 5,000.
That was kind of, you know, all the time.
Yeah.
But I think the Parks and Rec would be disappointed if there wasn't enough for at least one grant in there. Um, and honestly, a good grant writer will be able to tell you before they sit down to write it, whether you stand a chance or not. And they should be the one, if you get a good grant writer to say, this isn't worth it, or this is worth it.
If you'd, if you'd like to do that, what I would recommend is to simply allocate a line item in the, in the Board of Commissioners budget for, say, $10,000 for grant for a contractual, contractual relationship with someone to do grant writing for us.
Yeah.
And I, I, I really don't want it to be in the, in the Parks and Recs budget, even though we might do Parks and Recs grants. I don't want it to be isolated to that.
Yeah.
And I would much rather see it in the parks, just because I know how much they really have worked to become more, more enforced or more prevalent. And they're looking for some support from the county board of, say, $5,000 so that they can apply for a grant. They can't apply for a grant unless it comes to the county board, we have a, we have a grant process.
Well, then, that's why it should be in the, in the county boards. Things that they would think, you know.
I mean.
If you want to, if you want to say, put $5,000 in the Parks and Recs budget and $5,000 in the Board of Commissioners budget for grant writing, just as long as it's clear that that's subject to, you know, final board administrator vetting and final board approval of the, of the grant itself, that, that's fine. I understand what you're saying of, of, you know, affirming the desire of the, the Parks Commission.
If you put it in our regular Board of Commissioners budget, it looks like first come, first served. And I'm sure Parks Commission would appreciate.
Based upon the contact of the Parks Commission Chair, I'm pretty sure he'll be first served, he'll be first come.
I can hear that.
Oh, yeah.
Doesn't the park have a budget of 200 and some thousand dollars?
Right? None of, none of it includes, none of it includes that, that as a line item, that's first time.
But I mean, they could, they could use any part of that, you know, they could be out of their capital group or whatever they want for the right of grant. It doesn't have to be a specific line item for it. And that's what they've done before.
That's true, but again, that doesn't give, that doesn't give you or me that, first of all, they don't have the right to allocate funds. Parks Commission does not have the right to allocate funds under the Uniform Budgeting Act.
Right, but if they want to do a grant, they come to us saying we want to write this grant and it's so much money and you could do that.
I mean, so. Then they can do it, so they don't need a line.
Exactly.
So the whole, the whole point of, of having authorization so they don't have a computing authorization. Having that, that's why we do the budgets this way. It, it would tell them that we can apply for a grant, it would make them get their priorities right, so if they only fight for one, I'm one seven.
Why don't you just put five in their budget and find an administration that deals with it?
Okay, and then the poor farm barn.
Wait, before we leave the, the Parks and Rec, and I don't think I mistake, and I, and I mentioned it last time, but I think there's a, a advice from our insurer that we have a Veronica Valley problem. And if we do, we need to look at that and get that.
We, I, I, I have that and tend to, I just got it a year or so ago. It was done in 2023 and going to discuss it with the past to see where we stand on what was there. And it didn't just isolate Veronica Valley, it was all the parks specifically, it also made some general recommendations, so, yes.
And maybe there's some MMRE money to help recover that through a grant if we have to, if possible. Thank you.
Um, poor farm barn ADA complaint bathroom facilities, we'll just wait for Parks and Rec. We're not going to dive into that. Other requests in 2026, I understand that we'll probably be putting out, or we will be putting out RFPs for financial software. So until then, we won't budget for anything. Exterior security cameras, this is an ongoing thing on the CIP, but it's always earmarked with perhaps asking MMRMA to help us pay for this. It's out in the parking lot, apparently.
And my understanding is they're, they're not approving security camera grant requests at the present time, change.
Leland Dam Control Roof, I just got a bill for about $400 and we have a note to talk to buildings and grounds about the easeling agreement to fix the roof for $7,000. So their bill's like $400, we're not sure what's going on here. It's great if it is, but I want to make sure the job is done and that it's done correctly, so I just keep that on the list. The DNW contract you've approved, I'll make sure that it's budgeted for the correct amount for 2026. And then we talked about reestablishing a house engineer. We had a former contract with Mission Engineering. This might be a deeper discussion for another time since we're a little limited on time right now, but not to forget this is maybe a point of discussion. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay, now personnel, staffing, wages and benefits, I'm going to turn this over to the administrator and take notes.
Well, I know we have limited time, the, obviously the sheriff, the reclassification, the TNT deputy really already discussed that, addressed how we're going to account for that in the budget. We have the reclassification of Teamster, level, one level secretary to Teamster as office manager. That's something that basically is, you know, the sheriff has presented his rationale for that, and that's really a decision for you to make. If I were to make the recommendation, I would concur with the sheriff that it's appropriate, but based upon the duties, as I understand it, will be, that they are currently being done and will be done in the future. I've actually taken a position that that could possibly be classified as a confidential employee. But based upon what I understand, that's not how employees are used in that, that fashion to deal with labor relations and that sort of thing. So it couldn't be an exempt employee. That's something we can, we consider, but that's not in the, in the cards right now. So you really do have to make a decision on that.
All right, so, Mr. Wessel has his hand up.
I had spoken against that a month or so ago, since that time I talked to the other sheriff. I talked to the employee, I, I, I had talked to a colleague sitting at this table, and I have changed my mind and would support that.
Darren, let's ask, do you go with that?
Yes.
All right. Make adjustments accordingly. I think that adjustment to the staffing level of marine safety, I think that that's something. I don't know if we need to have a significant discussion on that.
It's the same number, it's four, and typically the highest paid individual is the commander. So, and what I've done is budgeted for one lead at the highest rate, two at returning rate, because we never know each year if perhaps a deputy from the previous year will come back, and then I budgeted for one at entry level.
So I think we can roll the 2025 budget with, with the increase that other staff.
It's still six 20 hours and it's the 3% increase on the non-uni wage scale.
Just going to roll that budget. The request for increase in jail overtime, I, it's $1,500, that seems to me like a amount that is, is either both insignificant and probably not enough.
Right.
So I, I don't really have a recommendation on that one at this point.
But I guess, but I, I did a map on that, I mean, it's, what the overall rate is, I mean, you're looking at 100 hours of overtime, that's two hours a week, I mean, a good supervisor should be able to, I mean, if it's a problem later on, then it should come to us, but to warrant it now, this budget, I don't see, see it paid for it.
How much is provided now?
I've got it.
I usually take the position of the overtime budget starts to, point for, it equates to the, equates to the level of a full-time employee. You don't need to start, because you know, you need a new employee.
Yeah. You pay overtime for nine months before it starts affecting.
I don't think we're definitely.
We're over budget in overtime in both the sheriff's office and the jail right now.
What's the, what's the budget?
60,000 for the sheriff. I've got to get to the jail.
49.5.
49.5?
49.5.
49.5, thank you.
So we go to 51.
Okay, that's, that's not near the cost of an FTE, so it's not an issue. Could you, yeah, but what's the census in the jail?
The, the consensus is that it's hard, you know, we don't know we're going to lose people.
The census, how many inmates do you have?
Oh, census, today I think we have 22, 23. And, you know, a fair number of those are borders from Grand Traverse, so it varies, it jumps up and down. It stays somewhere between, say, 17 and 28, it goes back and forth a little bit.
How many do we have?
Uh, less than half, generally less than half. People are going to be sentenced to jail for, they're getting other alternative means, but they're not getting to jail, so.
Say, go with, let's replace it double R, no, eat and lost up there.
Yeah, you know, one of the, one of the problems we're facing is that we don't know when people are leaving, generally you can't predict it. And it's hard to replace people, then they've got to go away to schools, whether it's a roadside of corrections. Corrections, I can tell you, we're probably going to have a minimum of three retirements next year. So we've got to get people up and running for that. So that, that's been the biggest difficulty is personnel. It's not, we're having to force people to overtime, and I hate to do that, overtime's good if you want it. But when you force it, you don't want to cause people to cause mistakes or have accidents.
But when, when that gets addressed, that happens, like I said, when I do the check, it's 100, that's 100 hours.
It's not much.
All right, Commissioner Wessel?
Yeah, this isn't just corrected to jail overtime, but we need to remember that we've added 10 hours per month for employees to the.
Those have always been 40s.
That's a specific deal.
Yeah, they, they were already working for.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Then when we talk about overtime in other offices, we ought to see that go down because we've added an awful lot of hours to employees.
If you're here at 5 o'clock, there's probably not overtime.
What?
If you're here at 5 o'clock any day, it probably sees that there's not likely a need for overtime and then the other, uh, non-24/7 operation.
Absolutely, I apologize for that, I didn't realize that, that you didn't change, but still something to look at. Now, 3% at $50,000 is about $1,500, so just from the, the contract we approved, you're about the same, so I say, move on.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'd like this, you know, end this meeting, because we got another one in 20 minutes.
Yeah.
Take and have a few, a few minutes break, get something to eat, and, and then schedule one for next Tuesday. Finish this up.
We can do that.
If it's just to finish this stuff.
Well, I was, I'm going to cancel the one on the 21st.
I know we did, but I'm just saying we could reschedule it so that we have it and then we can try to finish this budget here now.
If you want to do it tonight, can we just add it on the agenda tonight?
I don't want to do that, because only if you're not going to ask any questions tonight. I'm not standing here to make that.
So I can't be here next Tuesday, so as long as you guys promise to be good, I'm in.
We can.
All right, so.
It is, Campbell, are you here next? I have a minute, so if you're not here next Tuesday.
Probably not, no.
Okay.
Unless someone buys, it'll be a short meeting then.
See, I brought the other ones. They're teaming up, they're just teaming up. I'm going to just be a jerk.
Well, one other thing we could do would be to, through myself and consultation with Kathy, we could make you recommend what we do on holidays and send that to you by email and, and, and then have it. If we're not voting, I think we can do a consensus. Yeah. We can indicate what, what the, what we will do to prepare the budget at the end of the month. We can show you that, what that's going to look like.
I have a question, is there a meeting scheduled at the end of the month for that review?
No.
For that Tuesday. That's what I'm trying to do.
We could, we could meet again on Tuesday if.
No, I just meant like, in the past, you get, you get the whole budget and they tell you everything before it goes to publication, is the process. But maybe the process has changed.
If you want to do that, we could, we could do that, have a, schedule another meeting in the first week of November before you write the meeting. I, I think that might make more sense trying to.
You have to recommend it to be published. So at that meeting, you recommend that this is the budget you're going with and it goes to publications to the enterprise. Is that correct, Mr. Dyers? Okay.
Not, not that I'm aware of, but what, what you, what typically occurs is there's a, there's a budget hearing. That's when the budget is formally presented to the public. And then usually a week later, or two weeks later, whatever you decide, there is the actual decision on approving budget.
I don't.
The budget is made public at the public hearing, if you hold a comment on that. All right, we could, we could do as you suggested, if you'd like to have a meeting or we review it in its entirety, we could do that.
All right, regardless, we're going to need another meeting.
Yeah.
From what I've gathered here, so why don't we just adjourn tonight, have a regular meeting, and then we'll, we'll have administration or whatever send out an email with another date for signatures to get a meeting.
Could we meet the day before the 10th?
Potentially. I'd really like to see.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a bit confused, so the, the publication that goes to the enterprise has to be the budget that you are sending to the regular session meeting. So I guess I'm just wondering on the timeline, are you approving it for second meeting in November?
Right.
That means it has to be public, it has to be, the public hearing is actually the night of the regular session.
No, it's the right, it'd be the night of the executive session, it'd be the public hearing.
Yes, because we've always done it that way in the past, so I mean, it has to be done that way now.
Okay, so that, that means.
Any way we want.
That means it has to be ready for publication to Amy sooner than later than that. The budget has to be finished so that when they publish, you publishize in the enterprise, the public can come and review your work, which has been board approved. Okay.
So it's normally not board approved before the public hearing, that's actually contrary to, contrary to the.
It's, it's a, it's a recommendation to themselves, but, okay, would you like to go to public comment?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, I was already walking.
I know you were, any public comments?
No public comment, Mr. Comments?
Yeah.
Not next Tuesday, you're going to post.
You're proud of me, thanks.
That is a, when this whole discussion.